Good morning and welcome to the March 23 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I am Kate Flavin, the interim Public Information Officers...Officer, excuse me. Commissioners, I'll be brief this morning. You have a lot of important work to consider this morning, including a presentation from the Kansas Department of Transportation Secretary King, several items regarding com care, and several items regarding our financial future. And with that Chairman Howell, I will let you get this meeting started.
Well, thank you Kate, and thank you for everyone for being here today. Welcome everybody on TV as well. I'd like to call to order the regular business meeting for the Board of County Commissioners for the month of April, sorry, March 23, 2016. Madam Clerk, first item please.
In vocation to be led by Pastor Rick Klein, Riverwalk Church of Christ. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Morning Commissioners. Let's pray together. Almighty God, as we greet this new day, we declare with the writer of the Psalm, "That this is the day the Lord has made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it." So we thank you for this day, and for the opportunities will be presented to exercise the talents and skills you have gifted to us. The Lord, we're especially concerned today for families impacted by yesterday's events in Brussels. We feel helpless at times to make much of a difference, to relieve their suffering, to speak directly into their grief. But my prayer this morning is that they may somehow learn that on this morning, thousands of miles away in a city called Wichita, they were being prayed for, that you, Lord, would bring them comfort and courage. As a final request, I ask, Lord, that you be present in this meeting in a way that nurtures positive dialogue as our commissioners work for the good of the citizens of Sedgwick County. And I ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Klein for that this morning. Very encouraging prayer. Madam Clerk, next item please.
Roll call. Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Commissioner Ransah.
Present.
Chairman Howell.
Present. And I'm going to go ahead and take this opportunity to invite our Treasurer, Sedgwick County Treasurer, Lynda Kazire, to the microphone. We have good news to share, and I wanted to just take this opportunity to insert this good news into the agenda this morning. So with that, Lynda Kazire, please tell us what's going on in your world.
Thank you Chairman Howell. Good morning Commissioners. Lynda Kazire, Sedgwick County Treasurer. Yesterday, we launched our virtual wait line, our queueless system, without any problems. I know that's wonderful news for all of us. It's very easy to use. I invited Randy Bargill, my deputy, to kind of be our driver on the system while we talk through it. It's very easy. You just go to the county website, go to Treasurer, get in line, reserve your spot, and then you just click on the location that you would like to go to.
There we go.
There it goes.
Let me just tell you, this is the first time I've seen this, and so this is exciting for me. You know, we've invested a lot of discussion, about six months' worth of work, I think, maybe even more than that, maybe eight months' worth of work to get this to this point.
To get it going.
Thank you.
And then I actually asked you what you want to get in line for. We have an ADA station, and there are no people in line there, so we're ready for you. If you have a title, it's going to be about a six-minute wait. We have two people in line. If you're doing a renewal, we listed several other items on the website, so it's not just for renewals, it's for all types of different things, like a personalized plate. If you buy a personalized tag, you go to that line to do it, and it's about 21 minutes at Murdoch. So just go ahead and select anyone. And then it's going to send a text message saying how long it's going to take you. It says, "Thanks, your estimated wait time is now 22 minutes. We will let you know when you need to reach the front." And there's also commands that you can do. For status update, you can send an S, and it'll send you a text back. If you need more time, you can press M, and it'll move you further back in the line. Say you're at a doctor's appointment, you're running a little bit later than you'd planned, you get your text, you can hit a M, it'll move you a little further back in the line, and then it'll send you a status update a little bit later. If you decide that you don't want to go to the tag office today, you can hit an L, which will allow you to leave the queue. It's very simple, it's very user-friendly. We're just really thrilled to have it. Again, we're just very thankful. I thank all of you for approving that at the bid board. And if you don't have a cellphone or a PC, no worries. Walk in the tag office, we've got a kiosk. You just enter a little bit of information, we'll give you a paper ticket, and you're right there in the queue.
So in that case, they could actually leave and come back?
They can leave and come back, yeah.
That kind of thing. So I guess the intent of this really is, we don't want people to have to stay in the office necessarily while they're in line. They can get in line at the workplace or at home, and then show up basically close to the right time, or they can actually get in line virtually, and then they can go do other things and know when to come back.
And then come, and they'll get the updates on there. As long as your cellphone will take text, it'll work fine for you. And we also have big monitors in the office that show the last four digits of the phone numbers, so that that way, when the announcement goes over, and it goes, "Now serving 5123", then you know at Station 6. So you get up, you go to Station 6, the clerk's there, they'll take care of you right there.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
This is an exciting day for Sedgwick County. Commissioner Unruh has comments.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Madam Treasurer, while we're celebrating the initiation of this new innovation, perhaps you'd give us an update on the new facility at...
The new facility is moving right along. I'm also very thankful for that. I know that three of you have been over there. I know that Dave, and Jem, and Carl have all gone to tour it. Richard told me the other day in the hall, he drives by it, but I'm going to get him in there eventually. And Tim and I'll get over there soon, I'm sure. Manager Scholz has been there, and he's impressed, I think, so far with the work. We don't have a tentative closing date yet, but I'm looking forward to it. I'm sure it will be after the Elephant exhibit opens, because of timing and things like that, for furniture and other things. But it's exciting, and I'm looking very forward to moving.
Okay, very good. Well, since we're talking about things that have to do with the tag office, and many of our citizens are really, really excited about basketball season in their favorite school, I just want to remind folks that you have vanity tag...
Now, wait a minute. Are they in the tournament right now?
Well, no, I'm afraid my K-State team didn't make it this year, but Commissioner Norton's got a tag from WSU, and...
This does not allow you to drive angry. It only lets you support a team that plays angry. This is the Wichita State tag that you can also get.
And our Director of Public Works, David Spears, one of our big KU fans, he's got a copy of the KU tag, and they are still playing. Thanks for saving the best till last.
No problem, David, no problem. Those are available, as many other university plates are at the tag office, and thank you very much for you three volunteering to hold those plates up this time. I appreciate that.
Well, there is a fee for these.
Yes, there is.
It's a $50 annual fee, a $40 plate fee, and $5.50 county fees. So they're not free, and in my budget, they're not exactly cheap, but they're nice if you'd like to have one.
Okay.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
I see no other comments. Just want to say the tag office again, just to let everyone know, this has been a almost two-decade process to get to this point. So I keep praying the number, 17 years, and this is exciting. We're only a couple of months away from this thing actually opening up. We're going to have a fantastic new central office. So thank you for all you've done in planning that, and making this come to reality for our county. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks to all you guys for approving the purchase of the building. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item please.
Public agenda.
Do we have anybody signed up this morning to speak to the commission in general? We'll have opportunities on business items through the agenda for anybody to speak on those items when they come up, but in terms of general, I don't see anybody here to speak to the commission. So, Madam Clerk, next item please.
New business. Item A, presentation from the Kansas Department of Transportation.
All right, I'd like to welcome our State Department of Transportation Secretary Mike King, who traveled here to give us some good information this morning. Thank you for being here, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, it's great to be here. I have just a short presentation. As I travel around the state, I realized that I had not been here in quite a while, like ever. So I'm glad to be here, tell you a little bit about what's going on in the state, how we partner with you, and how we do some great things together. So with that, basic role of government. It's interesting for me, as this is my first tenure into politics. I'm from Heston originally, just 40 miles up to the north of here, and four years ago, actually five years ago, got the opportunity now to do this job. Really realizing the difference between what happens at the federal level, what happens at the state level, and the local level. And everyone has their individual roles and responsibilities. I think a primary function of the federal government is infrastructure and transportation. About a third of our revenue, a third of our budget, comes from the federal government. That's about $400 million for us here in Kansas, in the state. We also have motor fuel taxes, where as a part of our revenue stream, and then also a sales tax portion comes to us. And then at the local level, I think it's our responsibility to help fund infrastructure at the local level, and a third of the Kansas gas tax goes directly to cities and counties. That amounts to about $147 million per year. So again, I think an inherent role of the federal government, and really appreciative of the support that we get there. Transportation is multimodal. All of those little icons up there represent an important part of the economy, an important part of what we deliver at the state level. With the exception of, I know Commissioner Norton is wondering about the boat and the ship there, I do have responsibility for a waterway, even though we don't have any waterways in Kansas, but that is part of the job description. Transit is one that I want to highlight a little here. I came into this role as a road and bridge advocate, and have becoming, realizing how important transit is for many of our citizens, whether it be my mother going from the nursing home, on the little run, you know, to Walmart, or to the doctor's office. That's an important part about what we play, and we provide funds for those rides, those opportunities. We also help with the MPO here in Wichita, to be able to help the transit here. So let's get into a little bit more of the details here, a little bit about what's happening here. The bar chart on the left represents an indication of the miles of roadway that each of the individual localities is responsible for. By definition, we have about 140,000 miles of roadway in the state of Kansas, because that's about fourth most in the nation. Now, what is a little confusing sometimes is, I live on a sand road in rural Harvey County, well, that's part of the 140,000 miles. So when we square up every mile north-south, every mile east-west, we have a road, that's how you get to such a high number. At the state level, we only have about 7.3% of that 140,000 miles. So we have about 10,000 miles that we're responsible for. So cities, counties, townships are responsible for, you know, as you see there, the counties and the municipality breakdown. The turnpike at 236 miles is a very low percentage of that. But then if you look at the traffic volume, and I think that kind of speaks for itself, where most of the traffic and the roads are at, we're responsible for half of the traffic on those 10,000 miles. Then look at the turnpike there, about 5%. We did a little study on the turnpike, and also in my role, I am responsible for the turnpike as well now, and I think that's a great thing, where you have kind of a single overarching view of total transportation for the state of Kansas. 61%, that's 61% of all Kansans live within 20 miles of the turnpike. So from an economic engine point of view, that's why we wanted to make sure that it was talking with us at the DOT, and making sure that at the local level, we're as big of a partner as can be possible. I put this slide in here, I wanted to show, sometimes people view KDOT, or the state transportation, as just a funding source for many other agencies. So I wanted to put this slide in, and $900 million is what we consider in our lockbox. That's constitutionally protected, that's at the minimum what we can receive to do our job. We do receive, in addition to this 900 million, and this is made up of motor fuel taxes, both at the state level and at the federal level. In addition to this, we receive about 500 million of sales tax. About 16% of all sales tax dollars comes to the DOT. Now, in our state and many other states, and not this governor, and not just this legislative legislators, but for the last 30 years, governors, legislators have used this as a way to help fund some other parts of government, important parts of government. So when people see sweeps, Bank of KDOT, whatever you want to call it, that's an addition to this 900 million. So we still have a healthy amount that we work with as our base, and in addition, that's where you see those big expansion and modernization projects happen at. This allows us to do all of our maintenance that we need to maintain our 10,000 miles, and then also keep our operations going. So again, I just wanted to highlight that, and then again, as people, you know, sweeps, transfers, whatever people want to call them, that has not ever affected, nor will it affect, the third of the gas tax that goes directly to the cities and the counties, called the Special City-County Highway Fund. As far as our revenue stream from the federal government, or from our state motor fuel tax, we get 24 cents per gallon at the state level. So what that is, and that has not increased since about the 90s, and on the federal level, we get 18 cents per gallon of gas, and that has not increased since the 90s as well. So it doesn't matter what the price of gallon of gas is. When it was at $4, you know, we're still getting that 24 and 18 cents. Or at $1.90 now, we're still getting that 24 and 18 cents. Just wanted to make that clear to you. We also have a couple of other very small drivers license, some special permits, registration fees, things like that, that make that up. This shows you here that this is the Kansas motor fuel tax, shows the third of it in the red bar there. Hey Chairman Unruh, we put your KU colors on here. No, it's, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, you're the K-State guy. Okay, sorry about that little dig there. So yeah, we use our KU colors here, but again, that shows that the third of the total amount goes directly to that Special City-County Highway Fund. Something that's really important to South Central Kansas, and especially the Wichita-Sedgwick County area, is the airports and the aviation. We do have a Director of Aviation. We have a new one now, and hopefully you'll get a chance to meet him shortly if you have not already, Merrill Atwater. He was here actually at the Eisenhower opening, grand opening of the new terminal here. What we do is, we're responsible for 138 public use airports. So I say, if you have a control tower at your airport, that's not our responsibility, but if you don't have one, then it usually generally falls under our guidelines. What we're trying to do is to be able to make sure that rural Kansas has aviation experience, and so we check to make sure that a wind tower or things aren't getting in the way of the approach, or the takeoff/landing areas. And it's also our goal that 90% of all Kansans live within a 30-minute drive to an airport where an air ambulance service can assist you if needed. So that's a fixed-wing, twin-engine aircraft, and we're just slightly under 90%, so we've almost hit our goal of each of these airports being able to provide that service for the Kansans. We're also going to be hiring a Director of UAS, Unmanned Aerial Systems. Sometimes people call those drones, things like that. We think that's going to play an important role in the economy in the coming years. Obviously, this is a great area for us to be manufacturing and engineering these vehicles, these, can't call them drones. So we're really excited about that. I'm hoping to have an area of the state that's designated where different businesses and companies can come in and experiment with their aircraft, to be able to, like the Amazons of the world, as they look at home deliveries with these. We want to be on the cutting edge. We want to be a leader in the nation in this industry. So really appreciative of Senator Moran and his backing on this. He's on a very important committee for us, to be able to help with some federal legislation, which is where it really needs to happen at. A lot of things that we work with are also, how do we tie communities together? To get our 10,000 miles of road, we have a state highway about every 30 miles north-south, and about every 30 miles east-west. Well, not all of those have the same amount of volume of traffic on them. So what we did is, over the past year, we looked at what we called our Freight Corridors of Significance. And what we had is, we had people from all over the state, about a third government people, and about two-thirds citizens, industry folks, to be able to help us. If we would draw a map, if we would start identifying, what would be significant corridors, this is what we came up with. We kind of eliminated the interstates and the turnpike system, that's why that's in dashed red. That's fairly obvious to us, how important those are. So then we looked at the reds as being the more primary, and the blues as being what we'd call secondary primary. And for me, it's, if you look at this Highway 54400 going east and west out of Wichita, Sedgwick County is a very important corridor for us. My friends to the north on Highway 50, that would go from Newton-Hutchins, tie into Kinsley out a little farther west, it's not identified on this one. We're not going to be able to four-lane divide every highway in the state. So what we wanted to do is, we wanted to put something on the wall, so we can start the discussion, is this really what we want? And is this the correct direction? And then we'll go ahead and start funding this. The 54400 corridor is a very important corridor for us. We have a couple of projects planned. The goal, the long-term goal, is to get from El Paso, Texas, to Wichita-Sedgwick County, divided four-lane, through the three states that it goes through. So that's what we're working on. We also have a committee that we're just standing up, it's called the Kansas Freight Advisory Council, which is going to meet twice a year, and it's going to continue to look at areas like this. But we're also looking at, when we have a lot of oversized loads coming through our state, generating, how does that look, and how do we address those issues? So if anyone, either on the commission or from the audience, would be interested in that, that's something that we're going to start, and again, get a lot of public input on that. Now, I want to talk a little bit about what I focus on, what some of my thought process is, how we decide to help invest that billion dollars a year in infrastructure. And it's the economy. You know, we really have our system where we want it at, where it's going to be at. Now, how do we leverage? How do we leverage this 10,000 miles, not for our benefit as government, but for the benefit of the private business, or the citizens of Kansas, or the tourists that go through the state? So I'm a member of the Governor's Growth Team, and it's Departments of Commerce, Department of Agriculture, Department of Transportation, and Department of Revenue. The four of us meet on a regular basis to, number one, keep existing business, two, grow existing business, and three, attract new business to the state. There's going to be some announcements coming out, either tomorrow or Friday, that you'll see where we work together as a state to help increase the jobs. Also, local government participation. I think this is really key on the billion dollars that we invest, how does it benefit you? How does it benefit Sedgwick County? Even to the point of, we're looking at designs of intersections, of designs of freeways, is, does it allow you an opportunity to get more property tax value after we have left this behind? So I think that's an important part of what we do, and really want to work with the private sector on growing both jobs and revenue streams for our local partners. Vibrant Kansas. We have a fund within the DOT. We have $10 million per year that goes directly to economic development. It has to be used for infrastructure, but it can be used for roads, bridges, rail, transit, any of those type of things. To be able, again, that last part of getting that business to expand, that last part of getting a business to come to the state. These are Dairy Farmers of America, a $200 million investment out in Garden City. We were able to give them some, they're going to have, what is it, 100, 150 semis a day getting onto a state highway. So what we did is, we extended, we added a turn lane, and we extended the acceleration/deceleration lanes. Again, from a safety point of view, that's very important to them. Acme Foundry down in southeast Kansas, where, again, we were able to give them more acceleration/deceleration lanes. Most private businesses want to make sure that everyone is safe. And as we have an increase in our semi-use, we want to make sure that we're taking account of that as well. Defining economic growth. This is one thing that I struggle with a little bit on return on investment. How do I get an ROI on a state highway that maybe only has 250 to 300 vehicles a day on it? But that corridor might be where we put our heavy haul loads at. Or that corridor is going to be where we have school buses and schoolchildren, and we're connecting some of our rural spots. So we can't always just look at a return on investment. There's some things that we do for congestion relief, as what you're seeing on the Kellogg areas here. And then there's some things that we really do look at, and this is a great place, we're going to get a return on investment from a business, private business point... investment from a business, private business point of view. I can make the numbers work there. Measurements, accountability, those are all things that we continue to work on. We want to make sure that we do the best that we can, investing your dollars, your tax dollars, my tax dollars on that. So with that, I just wanted to thank you for all you do to help us. I hope that we're a help to you. If we're not, that's why I'm here, to be able to, to hear that firsthand and to make sure that we're a partner at the table. With that, I'd be glad to stand for some questions.
Secretary King, thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions, but I'll hold mine for just a moment. I think commissioners have questions and comments, so I'll recognize Commissioner Norton first.
Thank you for being here, Secretary. At the national level, they've kind of kicked the can down the road a little bit on their transportation plan. They kind of reauthorized, but we know that that bucket's not filling up like it used to, which means what comes down to the state and the local level could be diminished if there's not some kind of an increase in motor fuels taxes, or they even talked about vehicle miles traveled, a whole new system of revenue. Talk about that just a little bit, because it does end up affecting the Wichita Area Metro Planning Organization, local counties, other folks.
Yeah, the, the federal gas tax has not been increased for, again, it was the early 90s this last time. We feel like that would be a good place to increase. It's kind of that, if you use it, you know, you're paying for it type approach. They did, Congress did pass what's called the FAST Act here six months ago. That did provide some additional funding for us, a little bit extra, but we're, we're thankful for all that it did provide. A little tricky math on how they, how they helped fund that five-year program, but they were able to do it. Yeah, long-term on that, we have kicked the can down the road. We're starting to see the interstate system that was basically built in the 60s and 70s around here, start to see some of that end-of-life type approach. I will have to say, I've been really proud about the DOT. We rank number one in the nation on the interstate system, and we're top 10 on our roads and bridges. I know there was some news in the paper here recently about how we're the sixth worst in the nation. Again, that's counting all of the, all of the sand roads, gravel road, bridges and roads that are, go into that formula. That's really not apples-to-apples on that.
I'd like to ask you, what were those numbers again? We're, we're...
Sixth in the nation on bridges?
We were, we're number one in the nation on our, our interstate system, interstate system quality, and we're top 10 on our roads and bridges. Our worst ranking is, we're 33rd in the nation, and that's on fatalities per mile driven. Now, since that report came out, and this is the Reason Foundation, which we think is a good look at all 50 states of us, comparing more apples-to-apples. Since that report came out, we've had our two best years on the lowest number of fatalities. 2013 and 2015 were our best two years since 1947. Last year, we lost 355 lice on our roads, not just ours, but all the local roads as well. 355, too many, but we are going the right direction.
Thank you so much for those answers. Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Secretary, for coming here today. Your presentation, you mentioned township roads. Were, were those rolled in with the county roads in the slide that you had? Because they weren't separated, townships weren't separated out. And I was thinking that they, that's one of the largest, if not the largest volume of road miles in Kansas, even though there are a few counties, relative, a minority that do not have townships. But certainly Sedgwick County does.
Right, and those would be rolled into the county, the county number, yes.
Thank you. Because can, can you talk for a minute a little bit, you mentioned the possibility of increased semi-use, and that goes back to not only semi-use, but semi-use nationally and how we compare with increases in traffic volume compared to the other 49 states, but also, since we have a turnpike, and there are a number of other states with turnpikes, I was interested in terms of semi-use on the turnpike and turnpike revenues overall and how they're doing.
Okay. On the turnpike specifically, that total revenue is about $110 million per year. Of that, about a third of that is semi-use. For the last 36 months, 36, give or take a little bit, we've seen an increase of travel on the turnpike in about, about 7%. It's been fantastic. We had an 11% increase in February, but this February was a lot warmer than last February, so that's kind of an anomaly there. So we, you know, we're, we're seeing that as the price of fuel is down. We're seeing more travel there on that. The turnpike is self-funded. It receives no state dollars. It receives no federal dollars, nor will it ever, nor can it. If it would receive any federal dollars, then it would have to be designed to current interstate standards, and it's not at that point yet. We're working very hard on that to get it. Some of our exit ramps and entrance ramps are that old 1950s design, and we're working very hard to get that there. As far as how we compare to other states, we're similar with what I'll call this central United States as far as growth goes with semi-traffic. We're up a percenter or two with Iowa, Nebraska, Oklahoma, those. That's roughly about where we're at on that.
One, I can't let you get away without mentioning KTAG and KTAG use and interoperability with other systems, so...
Yeah, we're really, really thrilled that our electronic use, which is KTAG, is up to about 56% now. So we still have 43% of the people stopping and getting a ticket, and then at the other end, putting their quarters and dollars in. That's a, that's a very inefficient way for us to deliver our product, one that we're working on. We have, we now have interoperability, which is just sharing information with PikePass or the Oklahoma Turnpike. So you can have your KTAG and be in Oklahoma, go through the fast lane. It'll electronically read. It'll show up on your Kansas bill. By the end of the year or for sure first quarter of 2017, we'll be interoperable with the five separate Texas turnpikes, which is a large part of the traffic that comes through here as well. There's a lot of Dallas to Kansas City traffic, so we'll have that interoperable. Colorado, we're working with. We're working with Illinois. Those are, it's kind of the difference between Beta and VHS. You know, we all have different back office softwares that we're working on to be able to use, but we would highly encourage you to get an electronic form of payment. For us, it's a safety issue. Where you have accidents at is where you have different vehicles going different speeds. So we're asking you to stop on an interstate system, get a ticket, you know, and then stop again to pay. That's where we have accidents happen at. So for me, it's a safety issue. We just announced a $1.2 billion turnpike program for the next 10 years, and we're going to be going what's called open road tolling. So in some of our larger plazas, you're going to be able to drive through your regular lane, and if you want to pay, then you'll go off to the right, stop and pay there. But we're going to try to get you through at interstate speeds. But with that, we need longer approach, you know, acceleration/deceleration. A bill that we have before the legislators today is that we want the ability to be able to take a photo of your license plate, and if you, for hap, if you happened to got into the fast lane and you're not an electronic user, and again, you know, those things happen, to be able to go through there, that we want the ability to have a stick or a little bit of a hammer to ask you to pay if you choose not to pay. So...
On that, on that issue, isn't there going to be some type of administrative fee to do that? Because sometimes these tolls are, you know, a dollar or so. I hate to see a lot of, you know, infrastructure and overhead to, to collect a dollar, so...
Right. We've worked with, with the Treasurers Association on that, kind of come up with, if, if it's less than this amount, you know, we don't want anyone to put a hold on a registration, you know, for a couple of dollar point of view. We don't think it's going to be that many people. Again, we're going to handle it. These are only those habitual offenders that we're going to have to ask for a stick to be able to go get them.
Commissioner Norton?
I briefly talked about vehicle miles traveled.
Yep, right. You can only ask me one question at a time. I can only remember one thing.
No, I, I knew that. That's why I came back. But, but that's, that's a really important thing that's going to happen in the next five, 10 years in America, is, is cars become more fuel efficient, as we have hybrid cars, electric cars, collecting revenue on motor vehicle fuels. When you plug your car in, in your garage with electricity, becomes a whole different thing. Where is that going now nationally? I know Oregon has played around with it, a couple of other states have.
Oregon is leading the nation on that. And what they have done is, you can volunteer, you can voluntarily enter into the vehicle mile traveled system. So you do not, you get a rebate on your state gas tax. And what that is, is that they, you allow them to put a tracking device on your vehicle, and then it'll tell you how many miles that you have traveled. And again, kind of that usage thing. Where it's, where it has the capability to go is, if you're on a township road, you can pay a, let's just say a penny per mile. If you're on a county road, you could pay two cents per mile. If you're on an interstate, from nine o'clock till 10 o'clock rush hour traffic, you'll pay a higher fee than you do if you go there at night. A lot of privacy issues with that. Again, it's a total volunteer program. They're working out the bugs in it from the software point of view. It's been highly successful so far. Those people that only travel a couple of thousand miles per year are, are going to be the winners in this deal. So I, I think it's worth noting, from DOT's perspective, we have always seen an increase in our revenue stream from the motor fuel tax, but now as, as vehicles are so efficient, we're seeing that deflate to just very slightly increasing. We'll probably have some in a legislation next year or for sure the following year on hybrids or other vehicles. If you're a natural gas user or a compressed national, natural gas or liquefied national, natural gas, we have a way to tax that, but electric, we don't have anything right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to present just a, a piece of data that you may or may not, may not, may or may not even have, but I did ask for some information from, from your office regarding the projects in this community.
Sure.
A while back, and just to let the commissioners know and the audience know as well, what this report says. Now, all these projects are not approved necessarily, but some of the, many of them are. Some of them are in the early stages, but just to point out, in the next five years, what's on this document right now, planned, potentially planned, is just under $400 million in Sedgwick County over the next five years. And most of that's actually inside the city of Wichita. If you put it on a map, I've asked our Public Works Director to put this on a map, and I actually have that map in my office now. But there's a tremendous amount of spending by, by Kansas Department of Transportation inside the city of Wichita and also in Sedgwick County, averaging about $80 million per year. And some of these projects are huge. We know we have the, the project, it's a federal, state and, and local project, Kellogg and 235, which again, we're the, the only local match to that project. Sedgwick County is doing that, Kellogg and 235. It's a hundred, just under $104 million project, and that's the first of four, four potential phases to that project. Other projects, Kellogg and, and Greenwich Road, and that's a $135 million project, which is approved, and on it goes. And then also on top of that, the KTA has another $30 million planned of bridge replacements, primarily here in Sedgwick County. So a tremendous amount of spending by the state of Kansas in terms of local investment and infrastructure. And that, this leads me to another thought, and I don't know if you can anecdotally answer this question or not, but how much of the money that's being spent is in terms of replacement of infrastructure or maintenance of infrastructure versus new construction? Is there any way to anecdotally answer that question?
The only way I think I could accurately answer that is, this, this 10-year highway program that we're in now, about $7.5 billion, 7.8 billion, we have about $1.8 billion of that for modernization and expansion, and we have $4 billion for preservation. So that would, what is that, a three to one? Not quite, maybe two and a half to one, is we, we want to make sure that we maintain what we have. We have an outstanding system, and we're not going to let that system fall into disrepair. And then as legislators, taxpayers give us additional money, or if we get additional money from the Federals, then we'll be able to do more expansion and modernization projects.
Good answer. Just, this is kind of maybe a strange question, but I read recently, a couple of days ago, there was a article regarding the Kansas Contractors Association talking about how the cuts to KDOT have impacted their ability to, to be fully employed and find projects to work on. Whereas here in Sedgwick County, just to, one of our recent bid board items we had on our recent agenda, we had a sole, a sole bid, even though we, we solicited, I don't know, 15 or some, 15 or so different companies to do that, to do that work, only one responded because they were, really frankly, in Wichita, we were very, very busy. Do you see that this type of construction is happening, like in Sedgwick County's happened elsewhere? Or is that, does that story have any merit? The contractors, are they correcting the things they're saying? Because I see a disconnect between what's happening here in Sedgwick County and that article. I'm trying to put the two together somehow, and I don't know how to do that.
Boy, you're really putting me on the spot here, aren't you? Yeah, I would, I, some of the data that they used was, led you to, to be misinformed. What we have looked at, we looked at the, the labor codes for specifically highway and street construction, and that has been leveled over the last 15 years. So it doesn't matter, you know, quite frankly, if we spend, you know, if we're in the middle of a program or towards the end of a program or towards the beginning of a program, we have about the same number of jobs in that. What we're seeing is, we're seeing a consolidation in the industry, where you have, well, here in Sedgwick County, you've had a number of your old-line companies have merged together and formed one unit. We had 16 projects last year that the contractors moved over into this calendar year because they weren't able to get to all of them. Most of the contractors have helped one of signs out there. So it's, there's a little bit of a disconnect there.
And the way I look at this is, I think that politics, sometimes we try to, people try to find ways to spin data in their own directions. I would like to just know, from your perspective, has spending for KTA or a KDOT, has it trended upwards, let's say, over the last, over your, over your time at the KDOT? Is the spending actually trended upwards, or has there actually been some cuts? Because I think when you said, all the projects we want to do are actually fully funded. We're doing the things we need to do, things we want to do. Those things are happening. So yes, if you had millions of more dollars, you'd find ways to spend those dollars, but the things that need to be done are being done. And, and you made a very nice comment that really, despite the fact that there's been sweeps or, or borrowing on Bank of KDOT, or all those terms that we use, that the projects need to be done are still being done. And so I guess I'd like to know from your perspective, is, is spending actually trended upward, we're actually investing more in infrastructure, or, or actually see declines in, in how much we're spending on this type of stuff?
No, the spending has been about what we had anticipated with, with the program. We look, we take a long-term approach. You know, we take a five-year approach, and one year we might be a little up, or one year we might be a little down. That's planned due to our cash flow. But yeah, up until this point, we've been able to do everything that we have anticipated that we wanted to do. If you look at what $30 a barrel oil does for you, is it stretches our dollar out there quite a bit. We're able to buy more product than what we anticipated. So we're buying cheaper. As an owner, we're buying right now. We're the largest purchaser of asphalt in the state of Kansas, and we're buying that substantially cheaper than what we had in the past. We're also borrowing money much cheaper than what we had anticipated to do. But there's always need, and, and you know, in, in every department that you have, there's always need. It's just measuring the need up with, with what we're willing to pay as taxpayers.
In terms of, in terms of debt, I mean, the KDOT is one of the, one of the ways that the state does borrow money.
Right.
And then there's, there's bonds. I think the last I saw was about $4.5 billion worth of, of debt.
No, we have, we have a little over $2 billion worth of debt. I did go out and borrow $400 million the end of last year, more than what I had anticipated, but I got it at a yield rate of 2.41... yield rate of 2.412%. I remember those numbers, which is an incredible low rate. Since then, the rates have gone up. So I think that was a prudent decision. T-Works was set up with about, the anticipated borrowing, about $1.7 billion. With this 400 million, we're sitting at about $1.2 billion. And I don't anticipate borrowing for the next coming years. So I think we're going to come in well under what we anticipated borrowing on that part of it.
So this is, again, one of those things I think that has not been well, well understood by many people, and has not been well reported in the news. I feel like I'm in the know on some stuff. And I'm, I'm actually not really knowledgeable exactly what you just said, because that's really very good news, in my opinion. Our, our debt is much lower than I thought we were. And that's really good news, in my opinion.
It's a little frustrating also, when T-Works was set up, this $7.8 billion was set up, approved by legislators with over a billion dollars of transfers set up in it. So it was always planned that there would be transfers. Now, there has been more transfers than that billion. No question about that. But it was always set up with transfers in mind.
That makes a lot of sense. I think you've answered all my questions, and I don't see any other lights on here. So I just want to just say thank you so much for taking the time to come to Wichita and, and share with us. I think everything you said today, I would say my, my takeaway is it's all good news. And I'm really happy that our state is doing such a good job on, on state highway infrastructure and investment the way we are. I'm really proud of you. Appreciate your service to our state. Thank you for being here today.
Well, thank you. And you have great staff, and we have enjoyed working with them. And we can't do this without our local partners. So thank you for allowing us to be your partner.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to receive and file.
Yes, we need, we need to vote on this. We have a motion and a second. And Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
Thank you again, Mr. Secretary. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B, a resolution adopting the International Building Code 2012 edition.
Morning Chairman and Commission. Tom Stoltz, Director of Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. As you recall, at last week's commission meeting, we discussed the adoption of the new commercial building code for Wichita-Sedgwick County jurisdiction. Upon discussion, the commission had questions concerning four sections of the proposed amendments. And after further discussion with all commissioners, three of the amendments have been modified since last week. The changes are as follows. Section 27 in the resolution has been changed to reflect that 26,000 square feet of building space may be allowed before fire suppression is required in aircraft storage hangars in county jurisdiction. This modification reflects the current amendment allowed under incumbent code in the city of Wichita jurisdiction. Section 32 has been changed to reflect an allowed occupancy of 300 persons in Assembly Two buildings before requiring a sprinkler system. Similarly, this modification reflects the current amendment allowed under incumbent code in the city of Wichita jurisdiction. Regarding section 39, that entire amendment was deleted. After last week's meeting, the county fire marshal agreed that code could be followed as written concerning standpipe requirement, and thus we will have code equity between the city and county concerning standpipe requirements. And finally, section 69, which is the new section 68 in this week's resolution, this amendment will remain as is and will be allowed in both city and county jurisdictions as it gives commercial building owners of structures over three stories tall a choice of fire and smoke protection concerning elevator operations. At this point, staff would recommend adoption of the 2012 International Building Code with the accompanying resolutions of amendments. I would be glad to answer questions or clarify issues at this time.
Thank you, Director Stoltz, for that presentation. Have a, I'll recognize Commissioner Ranzau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, I want to thank you for your efforts and your patience in dealing with this, letting us put it off a week. I appreciate everything that you and your staff have done. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution and authorize the chairman to sign.
And before we go any further, I would ask the public, is there anybody here that would like to speak to this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion and a second. I don't see any further comments. So I guess we are ready to vote. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. I said it wrong, didn't I? I think we're all aye, so. All right. Thank you, thank you, Director Stoltz, for being here for the presentation. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, public hearing required to close out the Sedgwick County Neighborhood Stabilization Program.
Good morning, Commissioners. Marty Hughes, Accounting Department. In March of 2009, Sedgwick County received a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development grant through the Kansas Department of Commerce to operate a neighborhood stabilization program. The grant period concluded in September 2015. During the six-plus years that the county operated the program, South Central Kansas Economic Development District provided grant administration as they had experience and expertise in administering these similar grants for other cities and counties. Now that the program has concluded, the grant order requires that the county conducts a public hearing to formally close out the grant. But before you open the public hearing, I'd like to introduce Shelley Bradbury with South Central Kansas Economic Development District, who administered the grant for Sedgwick County, and will present some of the accomplishments achieved through this program. Here's Shelley to present that information. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Okay, I'm going to give you the results and our achievements that we enjoyed on this grant. The origin of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program grant comes from the Federal Housing and Recovery Act of 2008. And from this, Kansas was awarded almost $21 million in NSP funds. Therefore, then, they awarded Sedgwick County over $4.5 million. And that was in 2009. And Sedgwick County applied for this grant and received that in 2009. Then they applied for and received an additional $1 million in grant funds in 2011. So that results in a total of over $5.5 million in NSP funds. This grant was administered, as Marty said, by the organization I represent, South Central Kansas Economic Development District. We were appointed the approved grant administrator for this grant in South Central Kansas. And we did, we did administer this grant for other counties also. So the timeframe, the award was awarded and accepted by the Sedgwick County Commission in March of 2009. We commenced with the activities in the grant on April 15, 2009, and we completed activities in October of 2013. The goal of this grant was economic recovery. It was a very tough time in our nation, in our locale, and to help revive our neighborhoods and to benefit the housing market. That was the object of this grant. So the NSP funding in this grant provided funds to address vacant, abandoned, and foreclosed residential properties. So residential was the focus of this. A total of 31 properties were redeveloped. 15 new homes were built, and 16 homes were rehabilitated. These 31 homes were sold to LMI buyers. And LMI is low to moderate income. And these buyers were assisted with second soft mortgages to assist in down payments. So there was three uses of funds, redevelopment, rehabilitation, and then the financing. There were four organizations that assisted Sedgwick County in accomplishing these goals. Menonite Housing Rehabilitation Services, Power Community Development Corporation, Wichita Habitat for Humanity, and Community Housing Services. These four organizations were responsible for identifying properties, developing the properties through construction or rehabilitation, and assisting in identifying appropriate buyers. The 31 properties that were developed includes 23 in Wichita, three in Oaklawn, one in Clearwater, one in Bel Air, and three in Bentley. So who benefits? Well, all citizens benefit, first of all, and especially the 31 home buyers. 19 of those were in the LMI category at under 120% of medium income. 12 of those were at or below 50% of the area median income. The county benefits. We have 31 homes that are producing higher tax revenues, and our communities benefit because we do have improved housing stock and improved neighborhoods. So I'm just providing some examples here. Here is an example of a lot where a, a home has been demolished, and then a new home built. And this is at 1108 North Wabash. This is an example of rehabilitation. This is a before picture at 2125 North Minneapolis in Wichita, and then after rehabilitation. Another example of rehabilitation, 531 North Estelle in Wichita, and after. At 1547 North Estelle is another example of a vacant lot where a structure has been demolished, and then a new home constructed. And then the same, a vacant lot previously that had a structure at 5120 Meadowview in Oaklawn, and the new construction. So that, that concludes my report. I will mention that this grant is in good standing with the Department of Commerce. There's no outstanding issues or questions, and we are ready to proceed with closeout. So I welcome any questions.
Well, excuse me. Thank you, Shelley, for being here for the, for the presentation. Also, thank you to, to Marty Hughes for his part of this presentation. Make sure I understand this correctly. This, this was started in 2009. There's been two, two times that money was awarded to this grant. One was for $4.643 million.
Right.
Second one was for a million dollars.
Yes.
A total of $5.643 million. And they renovated or built 31 homes total. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
And those 31 homes were eventually sold to homeowners that were qualified because of, because of their income level.
Correct. Yes.
And I'm just curious if I'm doing this right. So if I divide that out, that's about $182,000 per home. Does that sound right?
Mm-hmm.
So the government spent $182,000 for each one of these 31 homes on average?
Of that $5.5 million, of course, there was administration fees, developer fees. So you would want to take a portion out of that. I think I figured out it was about $145 per home.
So if that's, excuse me, if that's taxpayer spending to, to create these homes, what, the homeowners that purchase these homes, where does that money go? They spent money to buy, buy the homes. Does that go back into the program, or?
Right. And that, that's what funded that, for example, that $1 million additional award. So when the homes were sold, and they were sold at a discount, a part of the grant requirements where they were not to exceed 95% of the value, the, the homes were sold. The homes were owned by Sedgwick County during the construction process. And so when they were sold, at closing, Sedgwick County was issued a check for the sales proceeds. And then Marty would then submit that back to the Department of Commerce. And so then that was rolled back into the program and then dispersed again.
Curiously, so there's, I'm looking at the community as a, as a whole. There's probably a lot of people in the community that would be at that income level or below.
Uh-huh.
How were these, how were these specific people selected to be able to purchase these homes amongst all their peers that may also be qualified?
The, the four organizations that I mentioned, they had an application process. They have people, their clients, that qualified. We also had some real estate agents involved, and they would advertise and list the homes. So it, it was open to all citizens. But they did have to qualify.
All right. Well, Commissioners, I'm going to recognize at least another Commissioner in just a moment. But let me just say, in a moment, if it's acceptable to the Commissioners, we're going to need to conduct a public hearing to officially close out the program as required by the grant award conditions. And so we'll be doing that in just a moment if it's acceptable to you all. But before we get to that, Commissioner Ranzau has comments.
Thank you, Mr. I have a few questions. So this money, was this part of stimulus money, or?
It was.
It was.
Yeah.
What was, what price were these homes sold for?
It varied. I, you know, I could research that, but it, you mean the percentage?
No, what price, like, I mean, if it cost $180,000 per house, did we sell it for $180,000?
No. No.
So do you know what the average, I mean, the pictures that I saw did not look like $180,000. It might be.
I would say the typical discount was around 25%. But none of them really truly cost $180,000.
Well, no, they did cost that much. Because you need to include the administrative costs.
Okay. Okay.
In my, I mean, it's taxpayer money. You're spending that, that amount, so.
The, the mortgage, okay, I'll, I'll say the mortgage, you know, the, what they needed to purchase, what we valued that home on.
Right.
And so we could, we could not, it was about a 25% discount.
But, but you based that upon, what, $145,000 money that you put into it? You didn't include the fees in the?
Um.
Part of the cost was the mortgage assistance.
Right. Right. Yeah. The third, and, and there was down payment assistance on that also.
Beyond this money?
No, not beyond that. That was part of the total.
Part of the money was to help give.
Right.
So, and when I say cost, I'm saying cost to the taxpayer.
Right. Okay.
So, so, so that's how we're getting. Thank you.
All right. Well, Commissioners, if it's acceptable, I'd like to go ahead and officially open the, open the public hearing to accept public comments on the closure of this grant. Do we need to vote on that, Counselor, or just go ahead and declare, opening, opening the hearing? Okay. So we're going to go ahead and open the hearing then for accept public comment.
Accept the comments.
Very good. So if there's anybody here that would like to speak regarding the closing of this grant, we would like to hear from you now. And when you come to the microphone, would you just please state your, your name and the address?
My name is Civil Strum. I reside at 326 North Walnut Street. She states as follows, that anybody that's low income could get this. Well, it's not always true. For example, if you're low income and you want to get your house fixed up, usually you're on a waiting list. And the waiting lists are usually long. Like, for example, when I first purchased my house, I asked for Menonite Housing to help me. They claimed that they weren't in my district, but down the street, 300 North Walnut, they were down there fixing up a house that a teenager had destroyed. Now, I would like to know why she keeps saying that anybody could get it if it's low income. And she needs to specifically tell that there are many people on the waiting list trying to get this help. You know, this is a good organization, don't get me wrong, that they're fixing up houses. But some of the low-income people are having a lot But some of the low-income people are having lots of hard times getting help. Like, for example, in my case, a long time ago, they told me I had to go down a certain place, fill out an application, and then they told, you know, I got my son to go online because you know how some young people are. And they kept considerably telling me, "You're not qualified." And I just wanted to let y'all know about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak during the public hearing? Commissioner Ranzau has some comments.
Yeah, I'd like to speak on, as a taxpayer, on behalf of my taxpayers. I think, I think this is a program, an example of the inefficiency of government and the inefficiency of the stimulus package. I know there were good intentions, but when you spend $180,000 taxpayer money per house, that's a lot. You could have had a lot more houses renovated or built than this. And this is an example of why government needs to stay out of things that shouldn't be involved in. You'd have been better off just, this was clearly not well-managed, and I'm disappointed in the results of this. And that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the community that would like to speak during the public hearing? I see another person. Please state your name and address.
My name's Charlie Peaster, and I live at 9453 North 135th Street West. And I just learned something today. Thirty-one of the, three of these houses were done in Bentley. And Bentley is having a problem with, number one, they opened up a housing project up there, and then the city of Bentley went in and spent a million dollars doing streets and curbs and utilities for a builder that eventually pulled out. And Bentley's looking at now, if they haven't already done it, taking those properties and put them in what they call a bank, and it's going to take them off the tax rolls. Now, I don't live in a $180,000 house. And I didn't get a $180,000 house built, and I've yet to hear what these people pay in the way of a mortgage on a house that costs anywhere near that account, that amount of money, number one. And are they talking about new houses in the district up there? Are they talking about old houses that were redone? Because I can't in my mind see any of the houses that were refurbished that they spent anywhere near this kind of money on. What do I think about this program? I'm like Commissioner Ranzau. It's a sham. $5.3 million for 31 properties? How do I sign up? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments from the communities. Is there anybody else would like to speak on this hearing? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Todd, 1559 North Payne here in Wichita, City of Kansas. I have been spending some time studying the existing program that's done by the city of Wichita. And I believe, I didn't come prepared to speak today, but it's called the Shoto Program. And those houses are built by CDC, also my Menonite Housing. Typically, they're $120,000 houses, so they don't match up with the $180,000 per unit. And I might point out that in that, was it 31 houses? Several of them are rehabilitation. Those are, those wind up with $35,000, $40,000 houses. This is a tremendous amount of money spent. I wonder what the overhead has to be. I mean, it's something else. The Shoto houses, typically, they're the houses, they're designed to be built on infill lots. Most of them were built on new development north of, north of the, of area six, in the northeast part of Wichita. The $120,000 houses, they typically sell for $92,500 each. That's a shortfall of $27,500 that's made up by the taxpayer, and I suspect out of this program. At 92.5, also for people who meet the low-income guidelines, there's an additional 20% of that, which is $18,500 in money that's available for down payment. And that's, and so you add those two together, plus $4,500 for closing costs, every single house built under the Shoto program, this is a different program than what we're talking about, costs the tax, federal taxpayers over $50,000. I think this is, this is a, certainly is an indication of the inefficiency and, and the problem, the problem I have with this, not only the taxpayers picking up the tab on this, over $50,000 per house, and of course, on the rehab, we're lucky in houses probably worth $30,000, $35,000. It's, the numbers just blow apart. The problem, you build, you build, what happens basically on these Shoto houses, $120,000 house with, with the money, 27.5 and the 18.5 cash assistance, that's, again, it's in the range of $50,000 per house. The buyers wind up with a $74,000 loan. They get in for a total of $1,000, so they have no skin in the game. I'm told that a lot of those houses go back because, you know, if the, unless you, unless you have skin in the game, you have nothing in it, and so it's easy to walk away if something happens, you can't make the payments. Now, what's, what's the problem with selling a $120,000 house for $74,000? Well, what happens if you happen to be, and I have a picture of a house in northeast Wichita that's actually right across the street from, from one of these houses. And this house, this house shows pride of ownership. It, and I've chatted with some of the folks in northeast Wichita. It was bought over 30 years ago. People put, had a down payment. They've made principal and interest payments for 30 years. Now they own their house free and clear. It shows pride of ownership, and it's worth in the range of $75,000. Now they're sitting there, they've, they've done everything, they have played by the rules on buying their own home. And can they sell their $75,000 house for $75,000 if directly across the street, someone can buy one with $1,000 for, with a $74,000 purchase price? It just messes with the market terribly. It, it's, citizens who play by the rules basically wind up on the short side of the stick. I'll be glad to answer questions, so, if you have any.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Todd. Anybody else from the community that would like to speak during this public hearing? Anybody else would like to speak on this public hearing? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I do have one, one more question myself. So the public hearing is now closed, but I am curious, I noticed that the word SCED or the organization SCED is on your slide here, and I also do see that this is, you also are, are you employed by the South Central Kansas Economic Development District?
Yes.
Okay. So they're the ones that received this grant and manage, they're managing this, they're the one that managed this for the last?
Yeah. They were hired as administrators. Now, Sedgwick County received the grant.
So Sedgwick County received the grant, but SCED managed that for the last seven years, since 2009 till present. This has been managed by SCED?
Correct.
Okay. And this 31 homes is a, is in totality over what happened, what's happened with this over the last seven years?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Peter John for the comments.
Just want to thank the public for coming out and speaking on this program this morning. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
For the presentation, and I don't see there's actually any vote required on this agenda. I need to move to the next item. Okay. With, with that understanding, Madam Clerk, please, let's go to the next item, please.
Item D, Special Calm Care Presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Marilyn Cook, Executive Director of Calm Care. I would ask that we delay this presentation just a little bit this morning. I am doing this in collaboration with a private citizen, Mr. Jason Van Sickle. And he had, he is the president of the Old Town Association, and he had a board meeting, a monthly board meeting this morning at 9:00, and thought he would get here by 10:30. So he should be here shortly. If we could delay it just a little bit and go on to the next item, I would appreciate it.
All right. Mr. Counsel, do we need to have a motion to adjust our agenda at this time, or just?
I think it's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'd like to make a motion. We would defer item D. We'll, we'll just come back to that when the, when the time is appropriate. But for right now, we're going to pass over item D and go on to item E if that's acceptable. I'll make that motion.
Motion in a second.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enru.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, consideration of a grant in the amount of $115,249 from Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services for Calm Care's PATH homelessness program.
Before I go on, thank you, Commissioners, for delaying that. He anticipated being here by 10:30, so it should be soon. The acronym for PATH, P-A-T-H, stands for Projects for Assistance in Transition from Homelessness. And Calm Care has been receiving funds from the state for nearly 19 years for this program. The application here is for a $115,249 grant, which essentially covers the salaries and the benefits of 2.4 FTE staff who are working in Calm Care's Center of City Homeless Program. The two full-time staff are outreach workers whose job it is to locate and engage literally homeless individuals in our community. And literally homeless individuals are those that are defined as living in shelters, in parks, in cars, and on the street. The 2.4 FTE staff member is a support staff member who tracks data and helps with the administration of the program. The staff working in this grant anticipate outreach to 300 individuals this next grant period. The current grant period that we're in right now, these very experienced staff who've been working, one of who's been working for well over 20 years for us, have outreach 284 individuals. And as a result of that, 214 of the individuals, or 75% of them that they outreach to are, were enrolled this year in Calm Care's services. The expectation, that outcome expectation on the part of KDS was 58%, so we exceeded that expectation. Calm Care will match, have a match of $39,241 worth of expenditures for this grant. And that match entails part of a supervisor's salary and fringe benefits that aren't otherwise covered, and some flex funds to help with expenses involved in getting IDs for individuals who have been homeless for a while. We purchase sunscreen for them, sometimes blankets. We do everything we can to engage them and bring them into services. So the program's done well, and we have high hopes for this continuing. We are recommending that you authorize us to apply and accept the grant award and authorize the chairman or his designee to sign all the necessary documents when they become available.
Mr. Chairman, I move we take the recommended action.
Okay, we have a motion. Mrs. Cook, thank you for the presentation. We have a motion. I have a couple of questions. Can we have a motion in a second now? I'm just curious, but I noticed this is from the, this grant is from KDS, which is the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability. Are these homeless necessarily, are they considered disabled or elderly necessarily? I'm just curious, I ask why that particular department is funding this versus some other department? And this is the way it's been apparently for a long time. I'm just?
Our engagement in this population is to try to engage individuals who are homeless and have some type of mental illness or behavioral health problem, whether that's a mental illness or a substance use disorder. And so we outreach to them, and when, so we outreach to as many as we can find. And if we see that there are mental, there's a mental illness or substance use disorder there, we try to engage them in services that would help them function better. So that's why the state's involved.
And can you talk about the amount of this grant, we're applying for this grant? Is this amount changed over the years?
It's been pretty steady over the years. We got a little additional money last year because our outcomes were so good. The state had a little bit more money, and they gave us some additional money. But normally, it's about the same.
And can you talk about the number of homeless in our community? We've, I know there's an intentional count that happens every year. How has that changed over the years? Are we, are we seeing any trend changes in the number of homeless in our community?
The number varies. The point-in-time count that this community does every end of January, the numbers for the one that was just done in January this year for 2016 are not in yet. However, the final numbers from the point-in-time count in 2014 showed 631 individuals who were homeless. And then last year, that number was reduced a little. It went from 631 to 561. So there's a small decrease in that.
All right. Well, thank you. I have no further questions. See no further comments. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enru.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye. I see that the latest Van Sickle is here now, so if it's, with no objection, I would like to allow us to go back into item D of the agenda, please. So with that, I think Marilyn Cook, you're, you're still at it. You're still at the, you're still with me, recognized for item D now.
Okay. You ready for me to proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. Every year, the National Council for Behavioral Health Care develops a theme for Mental Health Awareness Month. My favorite one was introduced several years ago, and that theme was "Mental Health Matters Every Day." And we know that's true, as good mental health is clearly necessary for overall health and well-being. But one in four individuals in our community and in our country struggle with mental illness. Some seek care, and some don't. And the reason many don't is because they lack the resources or to seek that care, or because they don't even know where to turn for help. Some lack knowledge about how effective treatment is, especially when it's started early for individuals that start experiencing symptoms. And some don't seek care because of the shame that they experience in having a brain disorder. Community mental health centers are the safety net for mental health in Kansas and, again, throughout the country. We treat not only mental illnesses, but we routinely connect individuals. We serve to a wide array of resources that help them lead more productive lives. We serve people of all ages and economic groups. We serve individuals with chronic and enduring problems, and those experiencing an immediate crisis. We serve people with addictions, with anxiety, with depression, with delusions and hallucinations, and those that have everyday relationship struggles. We interact with the public safety system, the legal system, the school system, the aging system, hospital system, developmental disability system, the child welfare system, addiction system, community correction system, and with physical health providers. And we do this quietly, and we do it 365 days a year. Investing in mental health is important because it affects workplace productivity, it affects economics, the economic stability of individuals and families, and it strongly influences relationships and family functioning. My throat is killing me, and I'm doing the same thing as Commissioner Peter John's. Excuse me. Calm Care has been fortunate to have a man in our community whose friend experienced our local system of care and who came to us and said, "I want to help. What can I do?" His name is Jason Van Sickle. He's a local businessman and developer. Oh, thank you so much. Local developer in Wichita, and he has offered to develop and pilot a public-private partnership with us. Jason made a presentation about this partnership on Monday in the B OCC staff meeting. And by Monday afternoon, our medical director, Dr. Lear, got an email from the chief resident of KU School of Medicine's first-year psychiatry residency program, asking what first-year psychiatry residents and medical students could do to- residents and medical students could do to help in some kind of volunteer capacity. Excuse me. Yesterday, I got an email from a vice president of a local insurance company that says, "I live in this community too. Let me know what I can do to help." So this tells me that there are potentially many Jason Van Sickles in our community who want to reach out and help. And at this point, I'd like to call Mr. Jason Van Sickle up to talk to you about the pilot partnership that we are introducing.
Thank you, Marilyn. And thank you to the County Commission for giving me time to speak today. As we visited on Monday, my background is that I got involved with Calm Care because a little over a year ago, I had a dear friend who had the unfortunate experience of having to put her brother into rehab. And not only did she have to put her brother into rehab, she had to put her brother's wife into rehab simultaneously. And this was a family with young kids. And so, this is a very traumatic experience to have to, as two families come together and figure out how to get these young adults the help that they needed. But, the first hurdle that they came into was just trying to figure out how to get them to, the help to detox. Because most people may not know, but to get into a rehab program, you first have to go through a detoxification program. And they found out at that time that there were no beds, there were no programs available to somebody who was ready to stand up and say, "I've got a problem, and I need help." And so, when I read in the newspaper about a year ago that the, that Calm Care was creating a community crisis center, one of the things that it was going to do was to create a place where people could go when they were ready to seek help and better themselves, I decided that I wanted to see if there's anything I could do to help. As a real estate developer, I offered my services because at the time, they were in a site selection process, and they were trying to figure out not only where they could go, but how they could make the numbers work and how they could bring all the pieces together. So I simply said, as a member of the private business community and somebody with a little bit of real estate experience, let me know if I can be helpful. I was then brought in and shown the facilities and the plan and all of the amazing things that Calm Care does, and I was blown away by how broad-reaching Calm Care is with the important services that it provides our community. And as I joined the Board for the Community Crisis Center, and that center found a home, and discussions began with the Commission about how Calm Care could possibly look at its future, going into a future with reduced state and federal funding, and going into a future where every tax dollar has to be looked at carefully in how it's spent, because that's a very important responsibility. I began to talk to Marilyn and her staff about the possibility of following a national trend where public-private partnerships are created. And that is the direction that the Calm Care staff decided to go in reaction to, or in response to, the Commission and the desire to see and make sure that Calm Care was financially viable going into the future. And so, this really is the result of a year or more's worth of work. I'd like to take a moment to thank the Council, because last year, under the guidance of our previous Commissioner, who was head of the Commission at the time, Commissioner Ranzau, who's actually my representative downtown, is a business owner, resident, and a property owner downtown, and the Commission had brought up this idea of exploring options. And so, Calm Care created an internal plan. It created an internal plan of starting a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that would bring in the private sector to partner with the public side. So what I mean by that is private business representatives and community leaders coming together on a board of directors of a nonprofit organization to partner on that board of directors with other members who would be from all of the various social service agencies that Calm Care impacts, which is every agency that the county is involved in, and have those, that group, work together to look at Calm Care, see where efficiencies could be created, figure out a plan for the future. And working with the present Chair of the Commission and you as Commissioners, we have presented a plan where we would create that 501(c)(3) and move forward. And as we do that now, I think one of the most important things in moving forward is accountability and actionability. And so, since we spoke on Monday, I have also received a number of calls from people saying, "How can we help? We had no idea the impact Calm Care has. If this is going to be a public-private partnership, we'd like to get involved." And there's also been questions about, "What are you going to do? What's the timeline? How are you moving forward?" And so, I think that one of the most important things is that this is a fundamental shift, a fundamental long-term shift in Calm Care, for, in a positive way. But it also needs to be an immediate shift that has tangible results. And so, as we move forward in the next 30 to 60 days, the goal is going to be to form a board of directors for this new nonprofit, to get the legal structure in place, and to begin putting a very detailed plan together for the items that can be done. On a broad scale, what we're going to be targeting is how to do more with less taxpayer dollars. That is our motto at this point. How to provide and maintain, at the very minimum, the level of services that Calm Care has come to provide its partners and the other county agencies, and the city of Wichita, and the county of Sedgwick County, but also improve and increase those without any increased burden on the taxpayers, and hopefully to see that burden on taxpayers decrease. That is the goal. And the way that we will do that is through several key initiatives. Number one, bringing in that outside private sector expertise, to shine a spotlight on everything. Nothing's holy. We need to look at everything and how it's done, and make sure it's being done the right way, and see if there's new efficiencies that could be created, and if there's ways that things could be done better. Also, through the advice and oversight of private sector business professionals who have ways in the private sector of doing things that it might not have been thought about like that in the public sector. We're also going to look at reducing costs and increasing services by implementing a volunteer program, so that we can get more people directly involved with Calm Care without additional cost to Calm Care. We're also going to want to make sure that people in the community understand the incredible impact that Calm Care has had on the community for the last 50 years under the leadership of the Commission. And because of that 50-year history of the Commission being able to make sure the taxpayer dollars are spent the right way through Calm Care, I think it's very important that the Commission maintain control over all of these various pieces. So this nonprofit will be created as a standalone nonprofit organization, but I see it as under the direct oversight of the County Commission. And the other thing that we will do is we will look at raising additional funds that weren't available to Calm Care as a purely public institution. So we'll look at grant opportunities that may be available to nonprofits that aren't available to public organizations. We will look at private fundraising, because Calm Care touches so many lives directly or indirectly, whether it's substance abuse treatment, whether it's mental health issues, whether it's suicide prevention. And so, we believe there's a lot of people who will get very passionate about Calm Care and wanting to be personally involved, or possibly contribute financially, to help Calm Care. And we want to get out there and get that involvement for the organization. So, again, I've really enjoyed working with this Commission. This Commission has shown me how a government organization can work together as a unified body to figure out how to do things well and do things even better. And I personally pledge to you that in the weeks and months ahead, I will be accountable to you, as well as Calm Care will be accountable to you, in making it clear the steps we're going to take, and how we're going to create actionable items that can be put into place and acted upon, not only for the long term, but in the weeks and the months ahead. So, thank you very much for your support of this plan, and we look forward to moving forward.
Well, thank you. I'm not sure you actually stated your address for the record, so would you mind doing that?
Sure. Business or home?
I think the home would be better.
Okay. I live at 324 North Emporia, which is the Wichita High Apartments, so...
Thank you very much. And I have some comments and questions. I'm just curious, under the RFP, now this is a question really for Director Cook or for yourself, but under the RFP that was proposed, I think one of the thoughts to that was that some level of services, not necessarily wholesale change, but parts of what we deliver in terms of services could be potentially shifted from what we do currently to new partners in the community that would deliver those services by contractor on our behalf. And so, I guess I'm curious, this public-private partnership of a community partner, somebody that has an interest in delivering services would approach this board of directors, is this something that you anticipate would be acceptable, that if someone out there can provide better services for less cost, that this is something that you'd be willing to contract with them and essentially do the same thing that the RFP had stated as some of its, some of its goals, I guess? So something that's still on the table, so to speak?
Well, I don't remember that component of the RFP personally, and I read it again very recently, but Calm Care already has a number of community partners that work in partnership with us to deliver services. While the outside business expertise that our local business community can bring to this is going to be critical to us, to look at how we're doing everything, it's just a part of the service delivery. They will also be helping fundraise and helping promote our services. So, you know, we would not be closed to that. We already have a number of community partners.
Well, it's interesting to me, again, I think we want to be very careful with any changes to Calm Care. I know that our district attorney, who's here today, and our sheriff have expressed strong concern that any changes to a system of service delivery that works very, very well right now, those changes are concerning. We want to make sure we don't lose anything we have currently, and if we make any changes, it's for good reasons, and we have hopefully improvements, improvement in services, not any reduction of services. And so, we want to be, we want to be very careful. And having said that, the RFP was received by the community as a very nervous proposal. I think people were concerned about where this is leading, and they were concerned that we're going to lose something that we currently have. And there's been a lot of concern expressed by people all over the community in that regard. This proposal has received much more, much warmer welcome. I'm trying to understand the difference, because, again, you're talking about goals of saving money, level change, you know, level services, potentially increases in services, but you stated on the front end of that, acknowledging the reduced state and federal funding, trying to maintain level services, and the fact that we've got reductions in revenue to sustain that system overall. And so, I guess it's interesting to me that changes are ahead, whether we go down this path or down a RFP path, we're questioning how we deliver services now, and changes will have to happen at some point, because, again, there's, just the reality is there's less funding today than there was maybe years ago. And so, that's something I anticipate will continue to happen potentially. We need to be ready to engage those challenges and find ways to deliver the better services with potentially less revenue to do that. So, changes are ahead regardless, whether it be through the RFP or through this public-private partnership. I guess it's interesting to me that the RFP has a kind of a cold reception, and people are very worried and nervous about what that means, and yet this one seems to have a very warm reception. Can you explain the difference between the two?
I think the way that I've seen it is that there's been a misunderstanding. This proposal is a result of that conversation about the RFP and the initiation of that process. So I think that the initiation of that process was a good thing. It made, it made everybody reevaluate and rethink. I think that the misconception was that somehow the Commission was going to get rid of Calm Care, or, you know, sell it off, or do some wholesale dismissal of the organization. And I never saw that as the goal of the Commission. I saw the potential RFP as a desire to just simply see if things could be done better, if there could be an outside component brought in that could bring in some more efficiencies and do some things better. And what happened was, the first group to step to the table before the RFP was officially released and to address the request for an RFP was Calm Care, and Calm Care created a proposal. And so, I'd like to say personally that I see this as a process that was successful. It was the Commission saying, "How can we do things better? And we'd like to see proposals." And it was Calm Care presenting a proposal, and the Commission saying, "You know what? We will give this internal proposal a shot first before we go outside and bring in outside people to look at what could be done." And to your question earlier, I really do think that we should be open to anything. As a business owner, if somebody comes to me and says, "I can do something you're doing internally, but because of economies of scale or efficiencies, I can do it better," then I would welcome them to bring in their outside consulting service, or their outside organization. And that's why I think it's important that we have internal stakeholders, like our partners at the other county organizations, and business owners that have that perspective, to say, "As long as it won't diminish the quality of what Calm Care provides, as long as it won't take away the ability for the Commission to say how taxpayer dollars are spent, if somebody comes with a proposal to do things better and increase efficiency or decrease costs while maintaining the quality of service that Calm Care provides, then I think we should look at every option." So, that's even another layer as to how this proposal is actually embracing the whole philosophy of that RFP proposal that went out there. So, again, I see this all as a very important process that was gone through, and a very good initial answer to why that process was put in place.
Well, I'll make one further comment. And by the way, what you just said just a minute ago is almost verbatim what I've been saying for the last six, eight months on this issue. You know, this idea we're going to destroy a great organization that does a lot of great things in the community because we're cheap, or something, I think that accusation is unfounded. We are trying to provide better services and maintain what we have, and that's been, in my opinion, the goal of this, of this RFP in the first place. In fact, I think governments, especially considering the largeness of Calm Care in terms of the number of employees and the amount of dollars being spent, and how many people are customers of our, of our, of our services we deliver, this is a huge part of Sedgwick County government. And so, we need to, again, just because that one thing alone, we need to constantly question, governments need to question themselves. Are we delivering the best we can? Are we doing this, the best deal for the taxpayer? Are we doing a good job? Are we being effective and efficient? Those are questions we ought to be asking ourselves. And that's what the RFP was, really, was simply just a question, "Are we doing the best we can?" And I guess, had we not asked for the RFP, we wouldn't be having this conversation today.
Agreed.
Right? So, we got a lot of criticism for that, but let's be clear, we receive, we're doing something potentially really good. And I think right now, we've got a lot of emotional buy-in from the community in a different way today than we had on the, on the RFP itself. And I think we've got support, I perceive we have support from the district attorney and the sheriff's office unlike what we had received from the RFP itself. So, I think that, again, overall, we were criticized, but in the end of the day, we're potentially going to have something that's even better than what we had before. This is going to be a positive regardless whatever happens at this point forward. I think there's going to be good, good things for Sedgwick County. I'll stop talking for just a moment. We have, Mr. Ranzau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thanks to Jason and Marilyn for keeping an open mind and coming here today and offering this proposal. I'll echo some of the sentiments of Chairman Howell. You know, we started doing a lot of things last year that we took a lot of heat for. We've challenged a lot of things in a lot of areas because I think we have to. We have this new economy. And there's been a lot of fear mongering going on with respect to a lot of things that we've done. Now, I'm not just talking about Calm Care. But I think now we're the next, well, days, weeks, months, years, you'll see the benefit to the community and the taxpayers as a result of us challenging what we're doing, why we're doing it, the status quo, so to speak, and try to find a way, provide services that are efficient, effective, and accountable. It just, I'm proud of the Commission's courage that we exhibited last year, and will continue to exhibit as far as doing what needs to be done on behalf of the taxpayers, despite all the rhetoric and fear mongering that's going on, because we know in the end, we'll end up in a good place. And I like options, I like proposals. I think we need to look at all options for everything that we do out there, and that's what, that's what we're looking at. And I appreciate you coming here today. I think it's appropriate to at least receive and file, I believe, Mr. Chairman, and I'll make that motion today.
We have a motion to receive and file.
Second.
We have a second.
I'll shake it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Further comments from Commissioner Norton?
We can go ahead and vote, and then I, after we vote.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote, but let's, let's have some comments after the vote. So, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enru.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye. Commissioner Norton.
I'm glad we're moving ahead with the thought process, you know. Innovation sometimes is hard, and change is hard, and kind of revisiting where you're at and what you've done for so many years is hard. I think part of the conversation and the consternation came when instantly we had some conversations about privatization.
Yeah.
I mean, which just says, get it, getting rid of it and giving it the private sector. And I think we've come up with a hybrid now, where the private sector can open up the belly of the beast, kind of look at what's being done, analyze it with their thought processes, put it through the strain of what government can do and what our other organizations and partners need from us. And I welcome that. There's nothing wrong with that. But I think we started at that level of, let's jettison it off, it's very... It's very expensive. The private sector automatically can do it better than anybody else. And I don't know that we know that. You know, we have some mandates, not only internally in our heart, but from the state to run the mental health organizations locally. I mean, there was legislation many years ago that moved that out of a state organization to a community-based organization. And I take that charge very seriously. And I don't want to lose too much control of that because we've worked hard. We've got great staff that have put in yeoman's work to understand the system and the difficulties we have in our community, which is different than every other community. We're a more mature community because we have a lot of veterans and homeless, because we just are a different kind of community. We have different things to deal with. We've been successful. We've been innovative, and we've been flexible. You know, when it came time to have conversations about a mental health pot with the sheriff, we took that challenge on and worked with Comcare and the criminal justice system and made that happen. So it's not like we're against new programs and thinking differently about this. As I have sat on the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council and talked to District Attorney Bennett and Sheriff Easter and other folks in the criminal justice system, I think they believe that we have a great system here that works well with what they have to do. And when we talk about jail populations, incarceration, what that means to our community, I don't think we want to go too far afield from our partners and not make sure that we consider that because it is too critical to our community. Truthfully, I often say that every citizen has physical health, and they have mental health. Now, we hope that their mental health is just as good as their physical health, but we know what one in four, I think you stated, have some kind of mental health deficiency or difficulty. And I think it's our charge to understand how we help that in society because it has an economic and financial drain on our economy. It hurts families and our social fabric. And I take that charge very seriously. So, for me, I look forward to what comes out of this. But the conversation started out with completely jettisoning off Comcare and privatizing it, and now it's gotten us to this conversation. So I can be supportive of it, which I already have been. But I want to caution us that even though I know private industry does things very, very well, there's some parts of what government does that only a government public structure can take care of. And we have some mandates that we have to live with and we need to take care of. And we owe it to our population as elected officials to understand how it takes our community and hurts it. And if we don't deal with it in a positive manner with a system, which is the other thing, I don't want to fragment the system that we've worked so diligently to have in our community where mental health providers that are in the private sector deliver a lot of our services already. But there is a portion of the population that have no payer sources, that are underserved, that are going to be in the system that won't be particularly embraced by private companies that have a profit, need a profit margin because there's no payer source. They're the underserved, the homeless, the indigent, and folks that have no insurance or payer source. And we have an obligation to still take care of that because of mental health reform. So, having said all of that, I am supportive, but I want to just throw out a cautionary tale that we don't want to move too fast. We want to be sure there's good analysis. I heard that we, you know, early on I heard, "Well, we'll do this in six months or a year." I think this is a three- or five-year process. There'll be some good things that come early and we can adopt. There'll be some other things that are more long-term. I mean, we didn't just jump into a mental health pot overnight. We looked at some national organizations, some other places that were doing it, tried to make sure we knew what our resources were and how we could integrate that into our community, and it's been pretty successful so far. So, we want to be sure that we take caution, we make the right decisions, and we don't go helter-skelter into this too quickly. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, for those comments. Commissioner Ranzau?
Yeah, thank you. For the record, I just want to clarify the history behind the whole RFP process for our media folks here to make sure everything is very clear. The discussion with respect to possibly privatizing parts of government, whether it be Comcare, aging, health department, is something that I've brought up for several years now. So this is not a new discussion at all. It did not happen all of a sudden. In fact, I think the idea to consider privatizing Comcare actually came from Comcare a few years ago, if I'm not mistaken. We didn't go down that road, that's fine. But I continue to ask the question and try and push the commission in that direction, to at least ask the question for a variety of departments, not just Comcare. Because in a lot of counties, some of these entities are in fact privatized with respect to aging and mental health. So, this has been ongoing for a long time. I think it's long overdue. And so, but this last year, you know, we had a change with the commission, and so we were able to actually begin this dialogue more earnestly. But there was nothing prejudged. We weren't going to all of a sudden jettison off Comcare or anything else. That's why we asked for an RFP process, to consider all options, whole, part, whatever, because we didn't know what was out there, but we at least need to ask the question. And that was a disappointing thing in my first four years here. I actually remember in the staff meeting being told we shouldn't even ask the question. So, but I continued to ask the question, and finally, last year, we got enough commissioners say, "Okay, let's ask the question." So, I just want to be clear that this has been an ongoing discussion, and there's nothing going to happen all of a sudden without thought, careful thought, and into this. But I am very appreciative that we're heading in the right direction on this issue and many others. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me just ask one question for clarity. This is a very unique proposal. Is there anything else in the state or broader area that you can say is similar to what we're talking about here?
Mr. Chairman, almost every other mental health center has some kind of fundraising and foundation component to it. We've all witnessed how the funding state funding has diminished for the services that we're offering. I, so, and most of the mental health centers are 501(c)(3) organizations. So, while they have fundraising, some of them have hired private firms to do that. Some of them have staff, people on their staff who take that responsibility. One of the mental health centers, the Children's Mental Health Center in Topeka, does a gala every year. So everybody has their own kind of slant on this. But I don't know any that, since only two of us are public entities and government-run entities, I don't know anybody else that is doing this. And we're excited about it.
So for clarity, again, we're one of two counties in the state of Kansas that are government providers, and we're creating a sister organization, this public-private partnership we're talking about today. So we have a government organization that delivers services, but it's also in, it's working with a sister organization that we're potentially creating with this proposal today.
Right.
Okay, so, this is, again, I heard a comment on Monday. Someone said this is very unique, maybe the only one that's like this. And I wanted to just explain that to the community, so they understand exactly what's being discussed here. This is a very unique proposal.
Now, I will say Johnson County, who is the other government-employed mental health center, does have a small organization that they've had for a while called Friends of Johnson County. I don't believe it's very active in what they're doing. And I don't know if it goes beyond fundraising. We did talk to that community mental health center, and they said, you know, "It's been kind of dormant for a while," and they also see the need to step up and have more involvement from local citizens and businesses. But this is pretty unique for us. I will say we have gotten donations in the past from completed suicides, from memorials. But I think in general, people don't really actually realize that they can provide some funding and financial help to a government organization.
Certainly, by being able to engage volunteer programs and get the community involved that way, plus fundraising opportunities and grant opportunities, this is going to create a lot of new, I think, opportunities for the system overall, how we deliver services. And I think in that regard, I'm very supportive of this idea. But let me just say, I think that myself, at least, I can't speak for my colleagues here, but myself, I'd like to see some details worked out on paper and have that presented to us formally so we can simply vote to pull the trigger on this and say that we're actually going in this direction. But right now, with all the discussion we've had so far in concept, it sounds very, really interesting to me. I think this is probably the right direction to go, but since we don't really have anything written down. By the way, I guess it was a four-page document Monday that some people received, but I have yet to see that. I don't believe I've received that yet that I'm aware of. So, again, I think the details of this need to be worked out. Definitions need to be put on paper. We need to have that formally presented to us in a future meeting, have us vote to pull the trigger that this is the direction we're headed. And I think that needs to happen still. So, although I think you're seeing some support amongst commissioners, there appears to be consensus here that this is the way we should go, I think we need to have a more of a formal presentation and actually have a vote to make this our clear direction. And until that happens, I think that my opinion is the RFP is still a document that's out there. It doesn't mean that we're going to do that, or not going to do that. I simply just say, my opinion is this is going to be suspended or on hold until we have, I guess, more understanding exactly what's being presented or what's being proposed by this partnership. So, personally, I would like to see the RFP just sit on the table for a little while and let this definition be created and then presented to us for a vote, for us to actually formally go in that direction. Although I think this is where we're headed, I think that still needs to happen personally. So, that's my contention. I would ask you to, I guess, to develop as much as you possibly can, get that all on paper. Let's have that presented to us in a future meeting, if that's okay.
And Chairman Howell, we did give you the four-page document when we briefed everybody, but it is a concept paper, as you're suggesting, not details. Those details will come when we identify the board members, identify the articles of incorporation that would need to happen for a 501(c)(3), develop bylaws, and develop strategies on how we're going to do to accomplish the things that 501(c)(3) would need to do.
And for example, you know, you talked about, I think Jason talked about, the commission will continue to maintain control. I think that the makeup of the board and the number of members and how that's done and who sits on that board, whether these are county employees or these are community partners, I think those are really important details. And so those are the kind of things I'd like to see, those things, you know, figured out. Somebody needs to make a proposal, get that on paper. Let's understand that fully before we, I guess, limit our options in any way.
Yeah, I think that what we had discussed when we met with each of you individually and then as a group is that to move forward with this initiative, it needed the support of the council. And we got a vote of confidence today. We've been told that we have your support to move forward. I would really envision moving forward now that everybody's on the same page and sees this as a good direction to be heading at this point in time, that it's agreed upon that this is a direction to go, but that at every step of the process along the way, it's reevaluated. I mean, that's just what needs to be happened. We need to, now that the community knows that the commission is behind this plan and wants to see where it can go, that we can form a board that has the confidence that they're volunteering to be on a board of an actual organization and not one that just may occur. And then that board can create a plan for what happens in the months, weeks, and months ahead so that we can start creating actionable items to be acted upon. And then myself and/or others can come before the commission as we go through each of those steps so the commission can stay informed and make sure that it's the direction that it wants to continue to go. So, I appreciate the commission saying that the possibility of a request for proposals is going to be put aside, that we're going to try this, we're going to see where it goes, that you have done a vote now to say that you want to see where it can go. And so the next steps will be to reach out to individuals and say, "This is going to be an organization we are creating with the support of the county commission, and now we need to define the detailed items that this organization's going to be doing going forward, and then be held accountable to that month after month, as often as you would like me or others to come back and report to you on what's happening, and make sure in public forums or private forums that it's going down the track that's meeting each of your individual desires for what needs to be accomplished." That's the direction that I think we're heading at this point.
And again, so again, I'm very hopeful for good things in the future. But let's just, for example, let's just take this a little bit step further. If the RFP had happened, I would expect to be a lot of accountability, a lot of performance measures, and a lot of ability on the part of the commission to change directions if we had to. So, I want to hold the same standards to this organization. I think we need to know there's a lot of accountability, there's a lot of performance measures. We have the opportunity to change directions if we need to. That needs to be clear.
Agreed.
And so, again, I have a lot of confidence in you and Director Cook, and this is going to be a great thing, and I'm very, very hopeful. We've got to maintain those options, and so that's why these things need to be defined on paper. And so just wanted to share that. I guess further comments from Commissioner Anru.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason, your explanation of next steps and what we're headed for, and the assumption that you have the consent of the commission, I think is necessary for you to start forming a board and start moving forward. So the way that you just described this is the way I understand we are moving forward, knowing full well that you'll keep us apprised of what you're doing. If we start trying to put too many steps in there, you're going to have a very difficult time on attracting folks to a board of directors. So, from my perspective, what you described to us is what we are consenting to.
Okay, so, just because I want to make sure we're clear. What I'm expecting in the future is to have some definition, and when that's understood to the greatest extent, until you hit some barrier. In other words, I know at some point you have to make the application for the 501(c)(3).
Right.
And I don't know if the board of directors has to be defined before that.
It does.
Okay, so, there's things to do between now and, I guess, saying we're limiting other options and we're moving in this direction. And I guess get those things defined as much as possible, and make that presentation back to the BOCC. Let's officially pull the trigger on this thing and go that direction. But let's get that definition as much as possible so that we know exactly what we're dealing with, and we understand the terms, we understand the accountability, we understand the performance measures, we understand the board of directors, we understand our ability to control what happens, whatever level that is. So, those things all need to be defined. You talked about the bylaws or the articles of...
Incorporation.
Of operation. Okay, so, a lot of things need to be defined. And I think you have the go-ahead to do all of those things. But at some point, we need to understand all that and have it presented to us, and then let's make a vote to this, make a vote that that's what we're going to actually go to.
Yeah, I would, I like that. I like the idea that what we can do as we move forward is... I would like to think that we've got the green light to move forward and that there's not going to be a scheduled vote at any point in the future to say, "Well, now we're going to choose whether to really move forward or not." I would prefer to have it be the statement today that the council, that the commission said we're moving forward, but the commission has veto power to decide to stop that movement at any point in time if it's not meeting the needs and the desires. And so as we move along and we get ready to file the 501(c)(3), the commission reviews that and agrees to go ahead and file it. As we move forward and put a plan of action for the months and the year ahead, the commission reviews that and agrees to, and decides whether to approve or not to approve that. And at any point during the time, if it doesn't look like this is a direction that's going to yield the results that the commission wants, of course, the commission has the right and responsibility to go look at other options at this time. And so I would prefer this be that we have been told we're ready to move forward so we can tell very important potential board members that we are moving forward, but that we need to work hard because if we don't accomplish the things that we pledged we could accomplish, and we don't do that along with the county commission, that at any time, the commission has other options that it could invoke.
I don't see any other comments. I want to say just thank you to both of you for the presentation today, and I'm looking forward to good things in our future. Thank you so much for being here and for making all the comments and answering all the questions today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I think we've been going at this for a long time, and I think there's a lot of us would like to have a five-minute break to stretch our legs. I'd like to recess. By my clock, it's 11:09. I'd like to be back here at 11:14. So let's recess for five minutes, please. Item, please.
Item F, resolution adopting revised debt policy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Chris Cronus, your Chief Financial Officer. The county debt policy was adopted in 2009, and it sets forth comprehensive guidelines for the financing of capital expenditures. It also states explicit objectives for county debt financing. Those objectives are that the county obtain financing only when necessary, that the process for identifying the timing and amount of debt or other financing be as efficient as possible, that the most favorable interest rate and other related costs be obtained in the transaction, and finally, that when appropriate, future financial flexibility be maintained. The debt policy goes on to say explicitly that, that debt shall be used only to purchase capital assets that cannot be acquired from other available current revenues or fund balances, and that it goes on to say that debt under no circumstances can be used to pay for operating expenditures. The, among the, those comprehensive guidelines that I mentioned are provisions that address essentially every aspect of capital planning, debt issuance, and debt administration. Perhaps the most important of those guidelines are those which set a ceiling on the amount of debt that the county will have outstanding or can have outstanding at any point in time. Those, the debt ceiling is established by a series of ratios, per capita debt, per capita direct overlapping and underlying debt, which essentially means all municipal debt, all tax-backed debt issued within Sedgwick County regardless of which government issues the debt. Direct debt, the county debt, as a percentage of the full market value of property in Sedgwick County, which is backing that debt, and the direct and overlapping and underlying debt, again, all debt, as a percentage of the estimated full market value. And there is a fifth measure, the debt burden, the percentage of debt service, county principal and interest payments, as a, as a percentage of the total county budget for general government, general fund, and debt service fund. Those five measures are commonly used by investment analysts and credit raters to evaluate the credit worthiness of issuers, and so we have used those measures to establish the debt ceiling for Sedgwick County. We have established targets for each of those measures that say the, the maximum amount of debt that can be issued, and we have said in the policy that we will never exceed more than three of those five targets. With the change in the commission over the past several years, it's become apparent that the commission as a body has a clear interest in linking the debt burden ratio to county expenditures more tightly than it has been in the existing policy. And so what you have before you is an amendment to the debt policy which changes that single ratio in our debt policy. Currently, we have a, an established ceiling on the debt burden of 20%. That is, currently, the amount of outstanding debt that we have cannot require us to make interest and principal payments on debt in an amount greater than 20% of the county's general fund and debt service fund budgets. Our actual performance to date, as, as of today, is at about 9.6%, so we are well under that threshold. The amendment that's before you reduces that ratio, that maximum target, from 20% to 9% effective immediately, and it further reduces it to 8% beginning in 2019, on January the 1st of 2019. And at that point, it reduces the, the ratio to 8%. Now, that will have the effect of further limiting the amount of additional debt that the county has the authority to issue under its self-imposed policy. As I said, currently, the amount of debt that we have outstanding requires a debt service burden of 9.6% of budget. The new policy, should you adopt it, will reduce that threshold to 9%. Effectively, that means that until we pay off some of our existing debt and get the debt burden below 9%, we won't be, under the policy, authorized to issue any new debt. That, as, as a financial matter, that is a non-issue because, in fact, we have no plans to issue debt in our capital improvement program that you've adopted or in the financial forecast, the longer-term financial forecast that, that you have seen that we produce here in, in the Finance Division. The county's current outstanding debt will drop below the 9% ratio next year, in 2017. And so if you adopt this policy, you would have a debt margin and ability to issue additional debt, additional new debt, in the amount of $7.6 million in 2017, or $37.7 million in 2018, or in 2019, when the margin ratio goes down to 8%, you would have the ability to issue $63.6 million of new debt. Now, each of those, with each of those numbers, I use the, the phrase "or" between them, and that's because that's not cumulative. You can't issue $7.6 million of debt in 2017 and $37 million in 2017. If you issue debt in 2017, that reduces the amount that you have remaining available in 2018 or 2019. But bottom line is that based on our current adopted capital improvement program and our current financial forecast, I think that I'm very comfortable with these, these ratios as you are proposing them. They will not have an adverse impact on the county's ability to do projects that are currently planned. The action that's before you is to adopt the resolution and authorize the chairman to sign it, or to deny the resolution as you deem appropriate. And I would suggest that at this time, it would be appropriate to take whichever of those two actions you do deem appropriate. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Cronus, for the presentation. I have a couple of quick questions. Does this limit our ability to refinance any current debt?
It would have our ability, well, the short answer is no.
Okay. And can you remind me, how much debt have we taken on and made decisions to, to accept new debt since January of 2015? Can you think back over the last year and three months? Have we accepted any or authorized any new debt during that period of time? Can you think? I don't think, I can't.
I don't believe so.
Yes, we did. We did the road.
Did we do $4 million of roads in '15?
And we did.
Two, seven, one.
Two, seven, one.
Oh, I apologize, yes.
Those were decisions that were made.
That's correct.
Essentially by, they were made the previous year to do that, I think.
Right.
And we actually had to do the work in that year.
Right.
But those were decisions were made by previous commission. Okay. Commissioner Renzo, comments?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, earlier today, I, I said that soon we'll start seeing the, the fruits of some of our actions that we've taken in the past, and this item and the next one is, are two of those things that I'm very happy that we have on our, our agenda. These were things that I'd hoped to get on the agenda before the end of last year, but we've continued to work these issues and analyze them, and so now they are on the agenda. I've made it no secret that it's been my goal to reduce the county's use of debt because I believe spending interest unnecessarily is a waste of taxpayer dollars. It could be better spent on other things or returned to them in the fourth, in the, in the form of a tax reduction. I've also stated, this is my position in the past, that we have borrowed money at, sometimes unnecessarily, particularly with roads and bridges. I'll, I'll say again that, that, you know, because we've borrowed $4 million a year on roads and bridges, you know, we're spending about $5.6, or we were, at $5.6 million in principal and interest, and we take some money out of that $4 million, so we're only getting $2.4 million worth of roads and bridges. So one of the things, so there's many-ish things that, that bring us to the point that we can do this, one of which is now we're paying cash for roads and bridges. That's in our five-year plan. We're starting to save money for CIP projects, which is good. And what this policy does is causes us to think about when we borrow money, when we pay cash, and makes this plan ahead and make sure it's really necessary. And I believe this is the right step in the right direction. I believe over time, we could continue to ratchet this down if we so desire it. I think it would be possible. Personally, I'd like to get, get it, get us down the range of 0 to 5%. But that being said, I'm very happy with, with this policy today because I think we're sending a message to, to our constituents and the taxpayers that we're very prudent in the decisions that we make. And sometimes you need to borrow money, and when that's necessary, we'll do that, but sometimes it's not. And, and we're not going to borrow money just because we can. I think this will, the decisions we made last year and today will continue to help improve our financial outlook as we move forward. And so with that, I would like to make the motion that we adopt the resolution and authorize the chairman to sign.
Second. And the motion is second. Commissioner Norton?
Well, I'm probably not going to support this. I think it's too dramatic of, of a movement. I, you know, several years ago, we talked about maybe moving it down about 15%, maybe 12%, and I think I could have been a little warmer to that, but I think we've taken it too far, and if we keep moving that way, we're going to hamstring ourselves as with the fluidity that we might need in the future. So I'm not going to be supportive today. I think there's a number that I could support, but taking it to 9% is, is too dramatic. We've shown over the years, just by the number that, of what our debt load is, is that we could, we can safely monitor ourselves and stay away from spending 20% every year. Obviously, we've, we've stayed under 10%. So I like the idea that we have a little more flexibility and fluidity in our ability if we need to, and, you know, Chris Cronus and his staff have kept us on an even keel with our ability to have debt usage, and I honor that because they've done a great job over the years, making sure they gave us wise and thoughtful counsel on how to use debt. So I probably will not be supportive of this number today.
Thank you for, thank you for those comments, Commissioner, Commissioner Anru.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'd like to start by saying, I think that during my years as a commissioner, our chief financial officer and our deputy financial officer and our budget director have done a great job in making debt financing recommendations to us, which is, I think, according to policy, your primary responsibility for debt financing comes from that triumvirate of people. And I think that whatever we do here should not be construed as any sort of criticism of the way that this county's been managed. It appears to me that a AAA rating, strong fund balances, a respected financial organization implies that we've been doing the right thing for a long time. I, I guess, after that statement, I have a couple of questions. Our financial situation right now is healthy? Mr. Cronus, that's a question?
Yes.
So this is not being generated by any sort of crisis or any sort of need to change other thing, in anything we're doing because we are operating with good financial recommendations?
Well, I'd certainly like to think so, yes. But it's, it's accurate, I think, to say that the policy, any policy, is a statement of intent by the governing body, and as a statement of intent, I don't consider any change of the policy to be an explicit criticism of, of staff. It's, merely represents a change in the expressed intent of that governing body.
And I'm glad you understand it that way. I, what, what is a typical, or perhaps you don't know, but what's a typical debt service ratio that large governments have? I mean, as a, I know you're involved in different associations. I mean, as a, I know you're involved in different associations, and maybe you know that number?
Well, what I know is that there is no typical number.
Okay.
First, different kinds of government, different governments with different demographics have different patterns of debt issuance. The city of Wichita, for example, has much more debt outstanding than Sedgwick County does, and their debt burden ratio is much higher than Sedgwick County's. But that's a function of the kind of services that the city of Wichita is responsible for providing, and their debt burden is not uncommon for cities of their size with their responsibilities. Sedgwick County's debt burden is somewhat below average for counties that are similar in size and scope of responsibilities to Sedgwick County. All of our ratios, the maximums that we have set in the policy, had been set with an eye on what the investment community considered to be conservative ratios. That is, we didn't reach for the stars, if you will, to set the highest possible threshold we thought we could get away with. Rather, we've set our debt ratios intentionally conservatively, and that is one of the factors that has earned us the AAA credit ratings that you cited earlier.
So, our current limit is considered a conservative number?
I would say so, yes.
Okay. What has, what's the history of our, in the last 10 years or so? What have we averaged as our percentage of debt service?
Working from memory, because I haven't looked at it in the past, in past years recently, my recollection is that it has been as high as 12 or 13% over, say, the past 10 years. Over the past, certainly over the past five years, it has been trending downwards to the level that it's at now.
All right, so the fact that we have a 20% ratio now, we've never really got very close to that?
No, sir.
Because it's a function of the commissioners?
That's correct.
So, whatever it is, we can continue to drive down that percentage or that benchmark just by our normal actions?
Yes.
By our actions on each opportunity we have. And if, and if we change this, it's clear, since we're changing it, the next commission could change it again and go back to 20, or 15, or 12, or they could do whatever they wanted. So, this is, just reflects the attitude of this particular commission. Is that it?
Yes, yes.
That's because we can change it next year?
Yes.
For me, I mean, in my experience making business decisions in my life, it seems like more options and more flexibility is better than fewer options and less flexibility. Since we have been very judicious in our use of debt during my time here, and this particular ratio, for example, has been well below our maximum, I don't see how this is a real issue other than a declaration of the perspective of this commission, because we, we have not, we've never even gotten close to our limit. But having said that, I guess I just want to say that I, I like more flexibility and more options to fulfill my duties in making policy decisions for this county than, than fewer options. So, I think that's all my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Just to let the public know, I'll be asking for your comments in just a moment, but before I do, and I think Commissioner Ransah has something he wants to clarify.
Yeah, I just want to say, now, our actual policy right now is 20%, and it goes down to nine, and then eight. That does sound like it's somewhat dramatic, but in reality, the last several years, it's hovered around 10. Right now, we're at 9.67. So, this is a very modest, from a practical standpoint, it's a very modest reduction. And as our CFO said, we could borrow up to $7.6 million next year, $37.7 million a year after, and, or $63 million in 2019, up to that over that period of time. I think that gives us more than enough flexibility for what we need to do, and so I'm, this is a very, as I said, this is a conservative decrease. It's very modest. I think it could be more, but we're being very cautious, and I think it's a prudent step. Thank you.
And just for clarity, the $63.6 million in 2019, that's with an 8% debt ratio, correct?
Yes.
If it was 9%, what would that be? You have any idea? It'd be a lot more than that. I'm sorry to put you on the spot that way, but it just occurred to me that, you know, this is a significant increase over, year over year, and that's including the fact that we're driving down that ratio down to 8%. So, to me, it's an important point to understand. Again, that's why I think there's reasons as to why we'd like to trim it 1% in that year, it just makes sense to me, but...
At 9%, the margin would be $94.2 million.
It seems like, it seems like a tremendous amount of authority, and I'm not sure what our history is of borrowing money, but that, that seems like that would be an extraordinary amount of money to borrow, so, be able to borrow that much. Anyway, before I go any further with the commissioner's comments, I'd like to recognize the public and ask them to, any members from the public would like to speak to this, and if so, please come to the microphone and give us your name and address. We'd like to hear from you.
Good morning, Chairman Howell, and members of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is John Todd. I live at 1559 North Payne in Wichita, Kansas. First of all, I want to compliment you for setting lower benchmarks on debt. I spent 30 years in the business, in, as an entrepreneur with my own business. I found, in my business as well as in my personal life, that I consistently performed better physically, financially, when I was free of debt. And actually, paying cash will put you in a position where, you know, paying cash is good, yet you're exercising fiscal responsibility and prudence with our tax dollars. I heartily recommend that you pass this resolution today. Thank you. You're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Any other member of the public would like to speak on this agenda item? All right. Please give us your name and address again for the record.
Again, my name's Charlie Peaster, and I live at 9453 North 135th Street West. And first of all, I'd like to thank my wife, because when I was working, she worked on, number one, when we first got married, we wanted to fly to California. We didn't have any credit cards. Guess what? You can't rent a car without a credit card unless you put down a big deposit. So, over the years, she worked on our credit rating. Right now, our credit rating is to the extent that we can borrow money for a year and pay no interest, because the credit card companies that we do business with want our business, and they're willing to loan us money for a period of time with no interest attached to it. The problem with that is, though, if you're going to borrow a certain amount, you better be able to pay it off within a 12-month period. Number one, if you don't need 20%, why do you have it? Why don't you set it down to where it is? If 9% is what it's going to do, and then go to 8, that's great. It gives you a better credit rating to begin with. It gives you less app to borrow money for something that you don't need to borrow money So, if you don't want to lure it, I have a problem with it. Couple of you are up for reelection, and one of you just said you're not going to vote for this. I hope your constituents take that into consideration when they go to vote for you, if you intend to run for the commission again. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you. Other members of the public? All right, please come and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Civil Strum. I reside at 326 North Walnut Street, Wichita, Kansas. I'm a homeowner. I've never borrowed money. I've always decided I needed to earn it myself. I constantly do not know why certain people get Visa cards, credit cards, or anything, because they can add up on payments. And I'm a mother, single mother. I have seven kids. Six are out in the job force right now, proving that they could do it. But now they're one of these people that have credit card debts, and I laugh about that. I say, what has the mom told you? Don't do it. And I think 9% is okay, but, like I said several times, businesses need to know, to get on their own two feet. If you have a business, you could support it yourself. Stop asking taxpayers to pay for it. Taxpayers cannot do it. We are not the local bank. Taxpayers are now out there in the workforce, trying to support their families and pay their bills. And I'm noticing each and every one of these commission meetings, the city, the county, they always want businesses to not have to pay for their responsibility. And I just think 9% is pretty good, but let's just let these businesses know. And also, I noticed that our property taxes going up. I just got informed that by a certain person, and I feel that's not right, because there are people that are unemployed, low-income, senior citizens like me. I'm 57, my birthday's March 25th, going to be 58. And I just want you all to learn that the taxpayers are not the bank. And when they do borrow it to businesses, some of them have decided not to pay it back, and they've left. Thank you.
You might like our next agenda item, so we're going to be talking about our mill levy in Sedgwick County as the next item that's on the agenda. Commissioner Peter John, and I just want to remind everyone, this is kind of a long meeting, and I would like to try to expedite this as much as possible, so, Commissioner Peter John.
Well, I was going to comment about, I appreciate staff providing us with options on issues, and of course, we've got the policy decision to make. I would point out, the county mill levy, the county portion of the mill levy, obviously the county treasurer collects taxes for every taxing entity here in Sedgwick County from the state on down. But the county mill levy hasn't increased, at least since, in quite a while, and in fact, the mill levy today, since I was elected in 2008, is well below where it was at that time. So, having said that, I realize that I'm drifting into the next item, but I wanted to point out that, for the listeners and people watching this out there, when we're talking about debt policy, this may seem arcane, but just think of it like a mortgage on your house. And we're kind of talking about, you know, how much would we be willing to go into debt, and how much would the private sector have to pick up the tab to be able to pay for that debt, and to what degree can it create uncertainty in the sense that the future commission can go ahead and say, well, if we've left the policy at 20, and even though we're at less than 10 now, they can obviously change it, but they're going to have to make a proactive effort to do so. So, I plan to be supportive of this this morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
And my final comment before we vote, again, I just, I think we ought to all have a personal debt policy. I think that it's a good thing for people to do. I listen to Dave Ramsey often, he's on our local radio station. He talks about 15-year mortgages rather than 30-year mortgages. He talks about a debt ratio based on your stable, stable income, having three to six months of expenditures saved up before you would go into debt. Again, that's a good policy thing. Not to go into debt for things that depreciate, things like cars, those should be paid for by cash. And those are, those are all good ideas for people, you know, people in the private sector. I guess if you apply those to government, it just makes a lot of sense to me that this is, this is good policy. Again, it gives us plenty of authority, I believe, more than we'll even need. Again, other commissioners, if they think this is a wrong policy, they can always go back and change it. But I think this is good to set our, set our goals high, and I think that this is a thing we ought to do today, so I'm going to be very supportive of this. We have a motion and a second, I believe. Any other comments from commissioners? Seeing Madam Court, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
No.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye. Madam Court, next item, please.
Item G, a resolution setting the target mill levy.
Commissioners, this action is, in essence, a statement of intent of the commission regarding the level of property taxes that staff is to use in planning the budgets for future years. The resolution says that, for consideration of future budgets, we should establish a target property tax rate, or a target mill levy, if you will, of 29.359 mills for budget years 2017 through 2022, and a lower rate of 28.758 mills, starting in budget year 2023, and moving on forward from there. The county, as you know, prepares a long-term financial forecast, a five-year financial forecast, which, among other things, attempts to estimate what level of taxation the county will impose in order to pay its costs. In the current, excuse me, in the current five-year financial forecast, which extends through 2021, the tax rate that we have assumed is 29.359 mills. And so, the, the actions of staff to date and the financial forecast for the future for the county is a reflection of the statement of intent that would be made with this, with the adoption of this resolution. I will note that the financial forecast is done, in part, to estimate future outcomes of county financial operations based on the adopted policies, our current activities, and projected plans. And if that estimated outcome is undesirable, then the point of doing a five-year financial forecast is that we have plenty of time to take corrective actions to avoid that adverse outcome. And so, the, the financial forecast that we have delivered to you previously does show some deficits in the future years. That is not at all uncommon. Typically, our financial forecasts do show those deficits, and what we do, what we do in the meantime, before those years arrive, is take actions to change that reality, to either reduce expenditures as needed, or to provide alternative sources of funding. And I don't have any concerns at all with the statement of intent that is embedded in this resolution before you, because as I said, it is what we are doing right now. And so, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. If there are no questions, then I would recommend that you either approve or disapprove the resolution as you deem appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Cronus. Commissioner Ransah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yep. Once again, I want to say, Chris, thanks for all your work on this issue. I know we've been analyzing this for a long time, as well as the debt things, particularly the debt for several months. This is a game changer. This is transformational. This is a result of a lot of hard work that we did last year, and we're continuing to Many municipalities allow their mill levy to, to go up incrementally over time, and still say they never voted for mill levy increase. We'd had some discussion and debate during the budget process last year. This resolution does two things. First of all, it makes a commitment to the taxpayers that we will control the rate of the mill levy, and we'll have a target that they know, they have certainty. It's not just for the individual taxpayer, but for businesses in our community as well. They can have some mill levy certainty, at the very least. We can't control the appraisal process, but we can control the mill levy. Also, I think it's important to note that, beginning in 2023, the target mill levy will be 28.658. That's a mill levy decrease of .6 mills. So, this commission, right now, is making a commitment to reduce the mill levy at that time. I think this is a very conservative approach. I think we could probably reduce it that much or more, a little bit... I think we could probably reduce it that much or more a little bit sooner, but we want to be very prudent and very cautious to ensure that we can make a commitment and keep it. But this is a result of doing things like controlling our spending, controlling our debts, and we're not spending money on interest. Instead, we can spend it on programs or return it to the taxpayers. And I think this is a fantastic resolution. It shows the tremendous work that we're doing here as a commission and all the staff here that's working hard. We can do this. We can make these commitments and still, and still provide our, our core services in an excellent manner, and I'm confident of that. And I'm very proud to be able to support this resolution today and make this commitment to the taxpayers. I think we're providing to the taxpayers, the vast majority of taxpayers, what they want. So we're, we are providing government that is efficient, effective, and accountable. And I think that's a good thing. So with that, I'll, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. I'd like to recognize the public once again. Has anybody from the public like to speak to the commissioners on this agenda item?
Chairman Howell, and members of the Board of County Commissioners, John Todd, 1559 Payne, Wichita, Kansas. I'll keep this very short. I think ending mill levy creep is an excellent idea. It provides transparency and it leads to taxpayer certainty. And I urge you to support this resolution today. It's in the interest of the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. I do like the term you used. It's called mill levy creep. And again, I think that through no intentional action by the governing board, what happens is when the clerk calculates the budgets every year and calculates the mill levy, I should say, usually there's some small incremental change. Last year, by the way, incremental change, if I calculated this right, was, was a .024 mills. We intended to be 29.359, but we actually were 29 point, let's see here, 29.383. So it was incremental change last year of a, of a .024 mills. If we don't take this into account, every year, this type of small incremental change happens. You end up with a tax increase that adds up over time. So what this resolution is doing is it's resetting us back to 29.359 every single year. I know last year, there was some criticism in the community about the insignificance of the tax cut. They thought this was not important. But the reality is, if we don't have due diligence to, to, to not let that incremental increase happen, then what you have over a period of time is a significant increase. And so I think it's important that we have this policy in place. I'm going to be very supportive. Other members of the public still like to address us. Come on up. Thank you.
My name is Civil Strum. I reside at 326 North Walnut Street, Wichita, Kansas. I also say, let's end this mill levy because it has been expensive and it will help taxpayers immensely. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Peter John, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would point out that one of the frustrations I've had as an elected official of the county is when we do our budgets, we don't get the opportunity to set the mill levy. I think we should. I think state law needs to be changed to give us that authority. And I think it's incumbent upon every elected official who is sitting, who is able to raise public revenue in the form of property taxes, that they have to, they have to, they need to speak out specifically, set, set a specific amount, and then live with it. I think Sedgwick County's been prepared. We could have easily done this if state law allowed us to do so. I'm hoping state law would change to do so. I think this is a step in the right direction in terms of certainty. People will notice that there's a reduction way, but it's way out and it's relatively modest. We're talking less than a mill. But this is what happens when folks, whether it's a 15-year or a 30-year mortgage gets paid off, they have a celebration sometimes. Burn the mortgage. All of a sudden, they've got to raise, in a sense, that they no longer have to make a payment for whether it's mortgage on a home, mortgage on automobile, or any other debt that they have. So we've got, you know, one of the frustrations I had when I became a commissioner was they said, well, one commission can't tie the hands of a future commission. But when you borrow money, you create long-term obligations. And there's a lot of obligations that Sedgwick County has that were in place when I joined this commission and I, I believe will still continue to be in place after I'm gone from this bench. And so anywhere where we can reduce the uncertainty, I think is a step in the right direction. So I plan to be supportive today. Thank you.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just real quick, I want to explain where the, the target mill levy for this reduction came from. The target mill levy in 2023 will be 28.758. I believe it was in 2005, the Board of County Commissioners increased the mill levy about 2.5 mills without voter approval. And it was the largest increase in the mill levy in the history of the commission. I think a result of that, three commissioners lost their jobs. But since that time, the commission has made effort to gradually eliminate that increase. This will ultimately end that, repeal that completely and go back to the 2005 levels before that mill levy increase was instituted without voter approval. And voter approval for tax increases to include mill levy increases is something that, that I, I in this commission supported. So that's where that number, number came from. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, just as a way of clarification, I was on that commission that voted to increase that two and a half mill levy. After much debate among the commissioners, it was to support the addition of, a new addition to our Sedgwick County Adult Detention Facility. It was before we changed directions and started to invest in alternatives to incarceration. A second component of that was to establish the National Center for Aviation Training, which is a great asset in our community, and we continue to bear the debt service for that facility. So in light of the fact that we've given back up to this point, 80% of that mill levy increase, and we're, and we're still paying for that debt service and spending, I wish I was prepared for this, but a substantial amount each year for alternatives to incarceration, which was a, a much better move, there's no doubt. But in light of the comments, I just want to make sure that folks know why we did it. 80% of it's given back, and we are still carrying expenses for a good move in public safety in terms of alternatives and a great asset in our community for helping our citizens train for good jobs. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Peter John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, for the record, I was in this room when that mill levy increase was occurred, although I was not a commissioner at the time, and it was in 2006, not in 2005. Thank you.
All right. There's seen no other comments from commissioners. Madam Court, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cronus. Madam Court, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioner.
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
I'm Scotts County Manager. I recommend approval of consent agenda items, Hotel through Oscar.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items with the exception of item L, which, which I'd like to discuss separately.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Court, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye. All right, Madam Court, I think, I think we're on item L now, so let's go ahead and talk about item L specifically.
Mr. Chairman, this, this is an amendment to the CIP program for an EMS station in my district. And I just have asked staff to prepare a chart on the, the original plan was to replace it, but now we're going to rehab it. And I just wanted to have staff present that and show how much money we're saving to taxpayers in this particular item.
Mr. Cronus.
Commissioners, the project that was originally proposed by staff in building the CIP a year ago was to replace the existing facility, which is located on 53rd Street, I believe it is, in Park City, to replace that with a new facility. The reasons for that are that the existing facility was originally constructed many years ago as a fire station, and it has simultaneously housed an EMS post. Several years ago, the fire station moved out of that facility to their new headquarters building located on 77th Street North. And so that left only EMS operating out of the existing building. It is an old building. It is in need of a number of repairs. And so the staff view at the time of the, the original proposal was that the best course of action would be to replace that old building that was not in good shape and larger than needed with a building more suitable for its current use and perhaps in a better location. The estimated cost of that was $1,453,000. And at the time, the staff proposal was to finance that cost with the issuance of bonds. And the estimate is that those bonds, sold in the same manner as the county traditionally sells bonds, would have imposed an interest cost over 20 years of $579,000 or $580,000 for a total project cost over the 20-year period of a little over $2 million. During the review of the CIP proposals by the commission, it was suggested that instead of spending that much money on that facility, it would be much more efficient and cost-effective to rehab the existing facility. And so what was put in the CIP, what was adopted by the commission, was a project to renovate or rehab the existing facility at an estimated cost of $210,800. In developing the, the detailed project plans for the renovation, there has been some additional repair work that has been identified as essential at the building. And that repair work is estimated, that additional work is estimated to cost $191,000. The action that's before you today is a CIP amendment to increase the project budget from what was adopted at $210,800 to a total of $410,884. You will see from this slide that even with that increase in the cost of the adopted project, the total outlay for this facility, in order to have an EMS post in the northern part of the county, the total outlay with this change will be a little under $411,000 as compared to the original staff project proposal that had a total cost, including interest, of a little over $2 million. And so comparing the two, you can see how much less the county will be spending by adopting this, this action that is before you today.
Thank you, Mr. Cronus. Commissioner Ranzau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chris, for taking the time to present that. I'll make a motion that we approve item L of the agenda. I just wanted to point out that the one, this example of the county trying to save taxpayer dollars, we're saving $1.6 million over the life of this project. In fact, the repair costs of 410, even with this amendment, is less than the amount we were going to spend on interest. That's why I don't like borrowing money if you don't have to. So not only do we not have to borrow money, we don't have to spend as much. And I think this is a prudent step in the right direction. It's right now being an EMS station. I think some other entities are using it now, emergency managers, a little bit, so but.
It's, it's being used for storage, yes.
And some other stuff. So this is another example, Howell, if you, if you analyze your, and your debt, your budget and make a few changes, you can save some money and, and control your, the things that we did today as far as controlling our debt policy and controlling our mill levy and returning some of that money back is a result of many, many things. This is just one example of the sorts of decisions we're making to make, to make that happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the motion, and I agree with all the comments you just made. Commissioner Peter John.
I'm going to second that motion and point out the fact that this is an excellent example to follow up on our earlier discussion on both the mill levy and the debt. Thank you.
I don't see any other comments, but I'd just like to say that I think that the taxpayers appreciate it when we find innovative solutions to just tearing down buildings or replacing buildings. I think that we have too many buildings that are sitting vacant in the community. They see these buildings as paid for by taxpayers and, and have served no real purpose in the community. It becomes, in a sense, a taxpayer-funded form of blight, if you will. I'd much rather see a building repaired and used. I think it just speaks well of the governing body that, I guess, looks for innovative solutions. This is going to be a, a nice building that's going to meet its needs, it's going to be functional, and it won't be nice, it won't be as nice as a brand-new building. Nice new buildings are, are great. But I think that we owe it to the taxpayers to, to be frugal and to, I guess, wear things out and use them as long as possible. So as long as it continues to meet the need, and this one certainly will, I think this is a better option for us. And so I appreciate the, the thoughtful proposal to, to do it this way rather than the previous proposal. With that, and if you know other comments from commissioners, Madam Court, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
All right, Madam Court, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Is there anybody from the public that has signed up to speak, to address the commission in general? Seeing none. Madam Court, next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
All right. Mr. Vaughn Etchen, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're marching towards adjournment. Plans are, as I understand it, that the legislature would like to get out early this week. They're scheduled to get out Friday, but I, I think they're going to try and get done tomorrow. But they are in the process of doing several items that affect the county. Last night, being principal among them, was Senate substitute for House Bill 2088, which contained the contents of Senate Bill 316. There was a long, arduous debate, there were several amendments, on the floor last night. And I do say last night, and I do want to thank my wife and kids for their patience last night as I was tracking this on Twitter. The result of last night's debate, and they got done and voted on this about 7:30, was that there was a floor amendment added regarding public safety costs. And then it was narrowed a little bit, not to include remodeling or new construction, but actual costs of law enforcement, fire, and EMS. So that item will be exempted. Additionally, on the, on the income side, it was the exemptions for taxing things like TIF districts and things like where the taxes are going to fund the district, and then eventually those things expire and would cause a, a raise in revenues. Those items were stricken last night as additional revenues not to be counted. So those really don't affect Sedgwick County much. They do affect some of the cities who have those districts. So I expect, since this really didn't get to the House floor, on the House side, it did get a committee hearing, that the House will likely non-concur and it'll go into conference, where we will see a slightly different version that goes to the governor. But I do expect that it will substantially look as it did this morning when it was published.
Thank you for that. Just so I understand, the public safety amendment that was made, you talked about new construction, reconstruction. Is that, is that issue of construction, reconstruction, or whatever that was, is that just for public safety facilities or is that for every facility, every?
And to delineate, there, there was some, some discussion about new construction in another part of the statute. And that it was in this, in the part that talks about increased property tax revenues, which is the section above that, that does include construction for new structures, improvements or remodeling, renovation of existing structures or improvements of real, on real property, but doesn't include ordinary, ordinary maintenance and repair. That's different than the law enforcement component. The law enforcement, there was the amendment to include public safety, and then there was an additional amendment to narrow that, to not include construction or remodeling of buildings. And the, the amendment included any increased property tax. And the amendment included any increased property tax from, for those services, go directly to services. So I think the example I talked to finance about this morning was for the sheriff, for the road deputies. That's a direct law enforcement cost, any increased cost there could be exempted.
So again, I think I understand the bill now and appreciate your explanation. I'd like everyone to know, including the viewers who could be on YouTube at this point, I'm not sure we're broadcasting anymore. But anyway, the current version of this bill does include the amendments that we drafted as Sedgwick County government. We offered them in Topeka when we testified on the bill. But moving the dates is still, is now part of this House Bill 2088, as well as the implementation date being to the midpoint of January the 1st, 2017. Those are things we advocated for in our amendment. And then me personally, I also offered support to some of the legislators, as well as the lobbyists, the huge advocates for this bill, that we would include the reconstruction and remodeling costs. This is in terms, I'd like to show support for our friends across the street. I offered my personal comments on that, and that was also adopted, as you just mentioned. So I think that the bill overall has all the components that I would like to see. It is, there is a lot of exemption still in here, so I'm not sure how constraining this is on any government at this point, but that's, I guess, just a, I guess we'll have to see how this is, how much this constrains government. I'm not sure that it does at all at this point. But nevertheless, anybody else have comments on House Bill 2088? Okay. Do you have any other bills that you'd like to highlight?
I would. There is House substitute for Senate Bill 280, which includes the provisions of House Bill 2714, which dealt with the appraisal process and the appraiser's office and the Board of Tax Appeals, and 2719, which dealt with some of the smaller taxing districts. Those items got shoved into House substitute for Senate Bill 280, which will be debated on the floor sometime later today. I checked, literally right before I came up, and they haven't got into the meat of the business today on the House floor. So that, there were some amendments made on the floor yesterday that I think do help the appraisal, it helps both the taxpayers and the appraisers. One of the principal things is there was a concern that if an appeal was filed, that not only would the taxpayer pay a filing fee, which is normal, but that the county would have to as well. That's been stricken. And that there would, in the original version of the bill, had there been, had a taxpayer prevailed during the appeal process, then it would have caused the property to be fee-appraised for the next two years after. And that has changed, and it does allow the appraiser some flexibility in the process to go back and review the reasons why the property was reduced initially, and if there was, and now the bill contains if there's more than a 5% increase in valuation, that the appraiser has to go back and look at it or get a fee appraisal for purposes of valuing the property. And I think that actually helps both the appraiser and the taxpayer.
Okay. Thank you for that one. Is there any other bills that you'd like to highlight?
There are two. One, and this came out yesterday, apparently, House Bill 2587 regarding sanctuary municipalities is not going to go forward. There were some concerns about the costs of litigation for the cities and counties that potentially would be affected by this, and so it is going to be shelved for the time being, may reappear sometime next year. And then Senate substitute for Senate Bill 65 deals with several concealed carry items. It includes, that has not hit the floor yet, but it will, it may end up on the floor today. It wasn't scheduled, but I don't necessarily think the calendar is correct that they're going to get it on the floor either today or tomorrow in order to be able to get out early. That contains the provisions of Senate Bill 421, which is the adequate security measure bypass. It also contains provisions regarding the counties and cities' ability to limit concealed carry among employees. It contains the provisions regarding being able to have limited adequate security measures, which would not necessarily affect Sedgwick County, but would affect some of the cities and smaller counties where they have problems securing the entirety of the building. So all of those, there's also one other provision in there that would make it easier and quicker for military personnel to get a concealed carry permit. Those are all contained within that bill. It's the time of session when try to get everything through and stuff as much as they can into one bill so that they can get it passed and either to the governor or to conference and then to the governor.
I apologize. I think I've lost track of the body that Senate Bill 65 is in. Is this, is this a House substitute for Senate Bill 65?
It's a House substitute for Senate Bill 65. Senate Bill 65 got out of the Senate last year, did not get out of the House.
Right. So this will be on the floor of the House if it moves forward?
Yes.
Okay. And it's not on the calendar right now?
Not on the calendar today, but as I, the calendar at this point is very fluid. The 2088 issue was not on the calendar originally yesterday morning, and it showed up late on the Senate calendar yesterday.
And if I remember correctly, 2088 had a several-hour debate yesterday, a three, four, five-hour debate yesterday, I believe?
Yes, it did, and there were several amendments. Some passed, some didn't. There was a fair amount of discussion over a long period of time, and the final vote really ended up being 24 to 16. So it was a lot, you know, there was, with all that consternation, there was still some concern among some of the senators that voted no.
I see. And we also had a very long debate in the House yesterday on Common Core, and I think that ultimately failed. But I guess the point I would make is I think Senate Bill 65 would be a long debate. I don't know how likely that is to come up, knowing it's probably going to be a fairly long debate in the House if this was to move forward on GO. But do you have any sense of whether that would be a, I guess, right now, I see, I'm a little concerned about the Speaker allowing a long debate on a gun bill, so I'm not sure that might happen.
Well, as I look at it, because it contains several components, it lends itself for long debate. There are several, there are several bills being, you know, that were stuffed into that one bill, and so you've got several hurdles in order to go forward and the possibility of multiple amendments being introduced. You know, I still believe that, you know, there are components of that bill that makes sense and that regardless of who's in charge of the floor debate, that they will get through. So I can't say that all of the components that I just mentioned are going to make it through, but I do suspect that the issue regarding the limited adequate security measures for, to be allowed and for some local control to happen there, and I also, I still firmly believe that the contents of Senate Bill 421, which is the adequate security measure bypass, I believe there's interest in that, too. Some of the other items, I'm not so sure regarding the employee restrictions or, you know, the military personnel concealed carry permit issue, whether those things are going to be in the final version.
Right. I think I understand all those bills that you just mentioned. Anything else that you'd like to raise?
I don't have, I don't have anything else that I think that we'd highlighted that is finally getting to action at this point. Again, like I said, they're scheduled for adjournment on Friday, probably going to actually try and get out on Thursday, and then there will be a recess, which I will be very thankful for until April 27th, when the veto schedule, veto session is scheduled to start.
Very good. Commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments for legislative issues? All right, well, I don't see any comments. Madam Court, next item, please.
Other.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any comments for other? Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to send out condolences to the people that were, and the families who were victims of the terrorist attack in Europe. I was, and speak a little bit to the editorial that's in today's paper, which called for more vigilance and action, and say that I absolutely agree. And it's very heartening to hear the Eagle perhaps changing its tune a little bit. A few weeks ago, Commissioner Peter John called upon this community to be prepared, to be vigilant, and he was criticized and called a racist. But I think maybe people are figuring out that this is a very difficult issue that deserves an honest conversation, and that people who are concerned about security here in America have reason to be concerned if you just look at what's going on in Europe. The Eagle quoted Secretary of State Kerry, who said, "The enemy has an entire worldview that is based upon eliminating those who do not subscribe to its perverse ideology." And I agree with that as well. In order to address this enemy, you have to have that honest and open debate, and we do need to be vigilant here as well as all over the world. And that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ranzau. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to try and give just a very brief overview of several activities that I think are important in terms of what I've been involved. It was mentioned earlier that I was one of the commissioners who's got to tour the new TAG office, and I think this is a very important change coming our way. The fact that Ron Estes was county treasurer when I came on board in 2009, and he'd been pushing for years to get a facility that had adequate parking, both for his employees as well as for the public, adequate space within the building, which the facility on Murdoch lacked, and the fact that we're moving forward on this, I think is a big plus, and I urge all my colleagues and I urge the public to keep their eyes open for this opening because it's going to be a big improvement along with the QLIS system. I'd also mention that within the last week, I was part of a group with several other commissioners, and they want to speak about it if they can, who went to the Quad Counties Meeting, which is four counties. Reno County hosted us at this quarterly meeting, and we met at the Hutcheson Correctional Facility and got a chance, and since I've become a commissioner, I've not only had the opportunity to tour some jails, prisons, and other detention correctional facilities, but we also got a meal at the prison. And I think it's important for the public out there to realize that keeping this community safe is a priority, at least for this commissioner, and I'm going to continue to push in that direction. I would also add that I had the opportunity with another commissioner and with the sheriff to participate in a meeting concerning, with two groups, concerning refugees coming into the community, and found out that, and this was before the horrible events of yesterday, that we're continuing to bring in folks. The largest contingent is from, they said, the Democratic Republic of Congo, which is, I think, capital is Kinshasa, as opposed to Brazzaville. There's a Republic of Congo that has Brazzaville capital in it. But the other communities or other countries that we're getting refugees in from include Eritrea, Somalia, Syria, and Iraq. So there is some consultation ongoing. I commend Sheriff Easter because his participation in the meeting, I think, was helpful because we were able to find out this is a kind of a regional event in a sense. It's not just Sedgwick County or the city of Wichita, although a lot of these people, refugees, are being resettled here. I mention it because, you know, Boston Marathon bombers, the Cernaya brothers, Washington Post initially reported that they were refugees. Then they retracted and said, whoops, we goofed. Actually, what happened, they, their parents came into the country and brought them in as boys, and they, because they were in the country already, they were asylum seekers, which is kind of what happens when you have refugees outside the country. Asylum seeker is somebody who gets here and says, hey, I want, I want to be helped. I mention this because, obviously, one of the two Boston bombers of that horrible atrocity was killed by law enforcement, but the second one became an American citizen before he committed his heinous acts. And I mention that because, Mr. Chairman, March 23rd is an important day in American history, and I'm going to go in inverse order here. On March 23rd, within my lifetime, 1965, America's first two-man spaceflight began as Gemini III lifted off from Cape Canaveral with Gus Grissom and the late Gus Grissom and John Young aboard. On March 23rd, 1857, a lot of folks may have seen elevators named Otis. Well, actually, that's the last name of Elijah Otis, who installed the world's first modern passenger elevator in New York City, which allowed basically for multi-story buildings to be built. March 23rd, March 23rd, 1806, the Lewis and Clark Expedition departed the Pacific Coast and began their return journey east. It was quite an adventure for their, but in my opinion, the most important event that occurred on March 23rd occurred in Richmond, Virginia, where in a packed St. John's Church, they were having a discussion at the Second Virginia Convention. And I think the words are as important today, especially in light of the atrocities for the Islamic jihadists and their attack on Western civilization yesterday, and I think we're at just as big a risk here as, because of what events in the last year in Chattanooga and San Bernardino, as what happened yesterday in Brussels. But I'd like to quote briefly from this famous American speech, quote, "Shall we gather strength by irresolution and inaction? Shall we acquire the means of effectual resistance by lying supinely on our backs and hugging the delusive phantom of hope until our enemies shall have bound us hand and foot?" The speaker, who was governor of the state or colony at that time, went on to say, "There is no retreat but in submission and slavery." He concluded his remarks by saying, "What would they have? Is life so dear or peace so sweet as to be purchased at the price of chains and slavery? Forbid it. Almighty God, I know what course others may take, but as for me, give me liberty or give me death." Of course, that's Patrick Henry, on March 23rd, 1775. So March 23rd is an important day in American history. Appreciate being allowed to get this into the record. Thank you.
Other commissioners, any comments? Seeing none. Commissioner Peter John, thank you for those eloquent remarks, and I appreciate the education on this day in history. I'd like to add to, well, one item that you missed, and I'd like to just point out that thanks to the federal government, on this date in 2010, they instituted the Affordable Care Act. And so we have much more affordable and more access to health care than we've ever had before. I am being sarcastic, of course. That was this day in history as well. And with that, I only have one other comment. That is that we do have an evening meeting coming up on April the 18th. It's a Monday night in the city of Derby. It'll be at the Welcome Center, which is at 611 North Mulberry Road. It's in the kind of the center of that building, is Suite 200. And again, this will be starting at 6 o'clock PM. We'll have a meet and greet. So we'd like to meet people from the community who want to come out and talk to commissioners face to face, ask us questions, or just simply talk about whatever they like. That's fine. And then, of course, at 6:30, we'll have our meeting on April the 18th. That'll be broadcast from a recording on Wednesday morning on the 20th of April. And so I just want to just continue to remind the public of this opportunity. So with that, Manager Schalles, I don't think we have a need for an executive session or a fire district meeting today. Anything else come before the, any other business come before the commission today?
So 1:30?
Seeing none. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to county commission broadcast, KPTS...